Good evening and welcome to the September 14, 2023 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. I'm Lee Cross and would you please join me in seeing the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much and good evening. Welcome again. I believe I see six trustees present. Trustee Don Ratan is alone absent.
We expect her to be here.
Okay. Well, I want to thank Dr. Bound and the administration staff for making this room available. I'm especially grateful and happy about the opportunity to see sunlight, I think, for the first time in my career at a meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. I don't know if we can promise sunshine every meeting, especially when we get into the doldrums of winter, but.
Nevertheless, thank you. The first item on our agenda here is the awards and recognition part of the meeting, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Bound.
All right, and I'd like to invite Stacy McDaniel to come to the podium. And first recognition of the evening is one that we're all very excited about. So Stacy?
Thank you very much, Dr. Bound. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Stacy McDaniel, the Executive Director of the Performing Arts and Midwest Trust Center here at Johnson County Community College. Thank you so much for inviting the Midwest Trust Center team here today. We are so pleased and honored to be able to recognize two members of the MTC Team of Volunteers called Ball Stars. Ball Stars dedicate their time and energy to ensuring that the Midwest Trust Center is able to provide for our neighbors a thriving, accessible performing arts program. Their work is known throughout the college and greater Kansas City arts community as professional and friendly, giving us an unparalleled reputation for service. We certainly could not do what we do without them. Now, I'd like to introduce our front of house manager, Ebeth Campbell, to say a few words about the Ball Star program and today's honorees.
Thank you, Stacy. As Stacy said, I am Ebeth Campbell. I'm the front of house manager at the Midwest Trust Center, which includes managing the Ball Star program. I'd like to share a little bit of history about the Ball Star program, as well as introduce our special guests. The Ball Star program started in 1990 with the construction of the Cultural Education Center, now, of course, the Midwest Trust Center. The Ball Stars have been a consistent and integral part of the performing arts programming and events at MTC since the very beginning. The Ball Stars not only assist with every event that we do at the Midwest Trust Center, they also serve as ambassadors for MTC, as well as JCC and the community. We currently have around 110 Ball Stars. Several of them have been a part of the program since the beginning, including one of our honorees here tonight. This last year, the Ball Stars helped us with over 190 events, served over 56,000 patrons. On average, each Ball Star worked around 60 hours, and together, they worked over 6,300 hours. Ball Stars work alongside our house management staff to ensure that each event runs smoothly, to see that our patrons feel welcome and comfortable as they enjoy our events and performances, and they are also trained in our emergency procedures, so they could help us here today if we needed to go to one of those places that Elisa mentioned. MTC's performing arts programming and other events would not be possible without the Ball Stars, as Stacy said. I'd also like to take a moment to introduce and thank Leslie Multer, who's here with us tonight. Leslie is one of our house managers and our front of house assistant at MTC, and she is truly the backbone of the Ball Star program and also a lot of fun to work with. She has been with the college for more than 10 years and is a huge asset to the program and JCC. So thank you, Leslie. Each year, Leslie and I host an appreciation event to celebrate our Ball Stars. I always joke, it's the one time of year I promise not to make them do any work. They just get to come, they don't have to wear their uniform, they're our guests for the day. So this year, on August 19, we met at Meadowbrook Clubhouse for the Appreciation Breakfast. A special thank you to trustee Musial and trustee Ingram for joining us that day and sharing such kind words in celebration of the Ball Stars. At this event, we give out awards and gifts to volunteers who have reached milestones in their volunteer hours, and we announce a Ball Star of the Year. This year, we recognized two special Ball Stars and wanted to recognize them more publicly in this forum tonight. This year, one of our longtime Ball Stars, Madeline Getzinger, reached a tremendous milestone. In her time as a Ball Star, she has worked over 4,000 hours. Carol Corker is also here this evening. Carol has been a Ball Star since 2013. She has worked almost 900 hours, and 100 of those hours were just last year alone, and this year, she was selected as Ball Star of the Year. Congratulations, Madeline and Carol, and I'd like to ask them both up to say a few words.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I was certainly caught off guard when my name was called at the appreciation banquet that I'm the selected Ball Star of the Year, because that's a very prestigious honor to have, especially with so many worthy other candidates in our group. I have been associated with this college since 1973, and I'm a proud alum of 1996, so I had a long tenure here. I actually just went one semester in 1973 and then came back in '91. Took me five years to finish that award, so. Anyway, it's always good to be back here. I'm very proud of this organization, very proud to represent it, and I'm very honored to be a part of the volunteer program.
Good afternoon. As Ebeth said, I have been here since the beginning. I took the hard hat tour through many years ago, through Yardley and Polsky, and if somebody had said at that time that I would be up here in 2023, you know, I would have probably, you know, not agreed with them. I wouldn't have known that. But it has been a real pleasure to be a Ball Star for all these years. We've always had very efficient people to work with, and certainly, Ebeth and Leslie are extremely efficient. They make volunteering just a real pleasure. You know, everything always runs very smoothly. We have wonderful people to volunteer with. Carol is just a very good example, and there's always such a variety of activities and things to volunteer for. That's just another one of the many things that make being a Ball Star so very nice. But I have certainly enjoyed my many years of being a volunteer.
Any questions for the Ball Stars? Madam Trustee?
Well, I'm sure we'd all like to say something, but it's thank you for your service to this organization. So it's always a pleasure to see you all, you know? I mean, as you say, everything just tends to run smoothly, but your shining, bright, happy faces are always a pleasure. So thank you for your gift of time, because like everyone else, there's plenty of places to choose to serve, and your service desk is pretty incredible. So thank you both very much, and congratulations to the Volunteer of the Year.
Mr. Trustee?
Well, I appreciated being at the volunteer, the reception, the least we could do for a large group of people who contribute so much. I suggested then, Ebeth, that we would try an event without the Ball Stars, so we would know what it was like without them, and she suggested that wouldn't work very well. But I've always said my number one favorite thing about being a board of trustees is the GED graduation. My second one is the scholarship lunch we had today. My third one is Ball Star Appreciation Day, and my fourth one is regular graduation. So you're in the top four, if that means anything. We, you know, everybody that goes takes you for granted, I think, to some extent. We always talk about a student-focused campus. You are our community link, because you link us to the community every time they come on campus, and there's no way we can say thank you enough, but you are appreciated.
Thank you. Laura Smith, trustee Smith.
I just want to echo a thank you as well. In the 20-plus years I've been tromping around this place, it usually starts through the doors where you all are standing. You have saved me personally many a times when I'm late finding the right door, quietly opening it, helping find the bathrooms, helping find any number of things that, for many community members, like for me, the MTC is the first experience they have on campus, and your role is incredibly instrumental in helping them feel welcome, helping them find the right place. And so all the hours you've dedicated is really a gift to us, and we thank you so very much for that.
Madam Trustee?
As everyone says, volunteers make the world go around, and thanks for being such giving people, and I'm glad that your heart for serving has led you here and kept you here, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right, and then next on the agenda, as you know, for me, it's a highlight every month, we get to spend time with one of our students, and you had a brief introduction to her at the end of this past academic year, when the gavel was passed from one family member to the other. But tonight, we thought it'd be good to spend a little bit of time with Apuna Gonzalez, who is our Student Senate President, but we wanted you to get to know her as an individual, and in a little bit later, we'll talk about, well, I guess that's up, well, in a little while as well, we'll get to talk to you about Student Senate. But now, we're going to talk about our fine young lady that's here.
Hello. As you know, as was said, my name is Apuna Gonzalez, and this is my second year here at JCC as a full-time student, and I'm working here to complete an Associate's of General Science, and I would just like to thank you all for being here today and for letting me speak. So I'm going to share with you a little bit about what brought me to JCC and my experiences here. As you, as some of you may know, I'm in the dual degree program from the Blue Valley School District, and you might already know, it's the program that allows students to take courses here at JCC to earn an Associate's Degree, as well as be transferred back to the high school to earn a high school diploma. And when I saw this program, I thought it'd be a great opportunity to get a little bit of a jumpstart on college. So far, with my time here at JCC, I have discovered a few things that I wouldn't have expected here, such as the community. Coming from a diverse background, I really appreciate the community that has been built here at JCC. It's one of, it's a community of inclusion, not only for cultural diversity and backgrounds, but for diversity of experiences as well. There's so many different clubs, organizations that are here at JCC, and there's a place for almost any person. Some of the organizations that I have found a community in is Student Senate and being a Student Life Ambassador. I'm able to be with people who are like-minded with me every day, people who want to serve their community. Another thing that I did not expect here at JCC was the opportunities outside of the classroom and the support of my professors. One of these experiences that I had was given to me by Professor Vu, who was my political science teacher. She helped me get an internship at Starland Education for Social Change, and that is just something that I couldn't have imagined doing if I weren't here at JCC. So I would like to thank her for that. And then for the future, I'm hoping to get an engineering degree at KU and continue helping serve people in my community. And I would also like to thank you on the Board of Trustees for supporting JCC and the students here and the school, so thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Apuna? Trustee Ray?
You, my friend, are going to change the world. There's no doubt about that. You are going to do tremendous things. I really enjoyed your comments about diversity and the way you look at diversity as being not only cultural diversity, but diversity of experiences and your commitment to community. And, you know, we're lacking a little of that, I feel like, in today's world, and so I applaud you for that. But, boy, the best of you is yet to come. I'm confident in that. It's always wonderful to hear from you, and just keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments for Apuna?
I would just say her brother's in trouble.
Yeah.
I was trying to find a way to reference her brother without looking like she's in anybody's shadow, because you are most certainly in your own lane, and you're going to do incredible things. I would echo that as well.
Apuna, any other questions, comments? Sorry?
I'd just say yay for women in STEM. You go, girl.
My scout master at Troop 52 in Lawrence was an engineering professor at KU, and he was my father's mentor to get him into the engineering program at KU, who then became a civil engineer, non-traditionally, after coming back here. And my brother, who's in the Navy, is also, well, he graduated with his degree from KU in civil engineering, so my family is history. K-State's a great school, and UMKC is also available, should you consider it, but KU's an excellent choice. Unless there's any other questions for Apuna, thank you very much. Good to see you again. We'll see you in a little bit.
Welcome. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Board Report. I'm just kidding, it's open forum. And we have four people slated, I believe. I'll read this statement here by the chair. "The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes, please, unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes in order to be recognized. Individuals must be recognized at the door 15 minutes prior to the regularly scheduled board meeting. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, please, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues, or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes, or otherwise a subject of review by the college or the board." There are four registered speakers tonight. We will, you'll be called to the podium in the order of registration.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wondered if these, if these speakers are here for the budget hearing? If they're not, okay, so, thank you.
No, they're here for a different matter. You'll be called to the podium in the order that you registered. Prior to beginning comments, we ask that you state your name, your city, and state. So with that said, our first speaker tonight, did I miss anything? Our first speaker tonight is, I apologize, Carrie Brudenberg? Griedenberg, excuse me. If you come to the podium, please, you have five minutes.
Thank you so much for hearing me out. I am part of the cosmetology program, which, as you know, is a discussion that is going to be taking place with all of you guys. And I just want to list that I am a Johnson County graduate. I believe in this college. My children have gone to this college, and I believe in this program. And, you know, part of our thing is to strengthen the community, and I believe the cosmetology program does that. If you go on Indeed today, you will see 326 jobs listed in Johnson County for the Cosmo Program. So we're trying to reach the community that we're serving, and that is this community. And that program is, has so many outlets to reach out to. The other thing that we're concerned about is we actually have the adult education at that building, and there's been talk about moving us to the campus, which we would love to be part of the community here, if that's what you so decide. But we pay rent for both sides, and the adult education is a grant-funded thing. So along with us, they're also worried that if something happens to us, what's going to happen to them? So I just ask you to consider that it's several programs that need to be considered and hopefully continued. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Just by way of reference, I'm going to guess that these people are probably referring to the student success recommendations or the issues that were raised in the Student Success Committee? Is that, okay, just so everybody is up to speed. The next speaker we have here this evening is Kerrigan Meehan. Did I say your name right?
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kerrigan, and I am a part-time esthetician student right now, and I have 10 weeks left. Yay, I'm excited. I am here today to speak on behalf of my program that I have been in for almost 18 months now. It has been a wonderful experience so far. I have met a lot of people. I have a clientele already, just being in school, which is something that is not usually heard of. And I also work at a medical spa right now, and there's two locations. It's called a new aesthetics and optimal wellness, and an esthetician who works there actually was in this program as well. And my owner speaks very highly of the program and actually looks for people who go to Johnson County Community College, as we are known to get 100% pass rate on all board exams, which is something that is also not heard of as well. But so far, again, like I said, it's been a great experience. I've learned a lot from my teacher, Chris, over there, who is wonderful. And, yeah, I think that's all I need to say.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. The next speaker we have here this evening is Kristi Dye.
Good evening. I am Chris Dye, and I live in Kansas City, Kansas. I think you know city and state. I wanted to thank you so much for listening to me and us this evening. I wanted to see you personally and speak to you about our program. We have, over the last year, we have had 500 people inquire and want to enroll in our programs, and I do have a list of those people, if you would like to have documentation of those people, if you would like that. We do have a number of people inquire about our programs, and that is simply by word of mouth. We are not a program that gets advertised or promoted or talked about in any way that is simply by our reputation as a program amongst the people in the industry. If the cosmetology, aesthetics, and nail programs were to be highlighted and promoted to the public, I promise you, you would be so proud of the response that you got. The interest is definitely there. The aesthetic industry growth rate is expected to grow over 9% within the next 10 years, reflecting such a high demand of services, and that comes from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. I do also want to acknowledge and realize that this particular program, there may have been some negative related issues regarding our program this past year, but what I also want you to know is that you may not have heard of all of the positive experiences and the student activities that go on. The positive things don't always get reported. They don't get gossiped about. They don't get shared at meetings. I think I have mentioned to you before, one of my favorite things about teaching aesthetics and cosmetology students is seeing the joy and sometimes tears in their eyes when they come to me and express how relieved they are to find the place where they fit in, where they feel at home, and they feel heard and comfortable, a place where they found their passion that they didn't know if they would ever find. This happens multiple times in multiple ways almost every day, and I wanted to bring up a situation that happened just a couple of nights ago. I brought in a guest speaker who had many years of experience in retail and freelance in the makeup industry, and I wanted to show students just another little part that's an option that they can take in their career path. But by the end of the night, light bulbs were popping off all over in students' minds as they had found another passion that they didn't even know, or they didn't feel confident in doing. Suddenly, students wanted more. They wanted more knowledge. They wanted more experience. They wanted more practice. So much positive student energy was created that particular night. Makeup artistry may sound insignificant in the scope of an aesthetic licensure, and honestly, it is a minor portion of that licensure.
You have about one minute left.
I'm sorry.
You have about one minute left.
Okay. However, when a student gets more excited and more motivated to create and engage in a class at 8:00 PM in the evening after they've been working a full-time job all day long, sometimes from 6:00 in the morning and are physically drained, and to create that spark and get excitement from those people who have been at a full-time job, it's just something that is so important, and engagement really matters to us, and we wanted you to know that we set our students up for success, and we do not set them up for an entry-level position or just to get their license.
Chris, thank you. Do you have a copy of that list?
I do.
May I have one?
Mr. Chair, I know it's not typical for us to ask questions, but can I just get clarification?
On, as to what?
Are you employed in the cosmetology program? I didn't get a clear understanding of.
Yes, I'm sorry. I am the lead instructor for the aesthetic evening program, the part-time program.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I wish we could talk more, but thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker we have is Ann Din. Did I say it right, Ann?
An.
An, excuse me. If you'd come to the podium, please.
Hi, my name is An, and I graduated aesthetic program in 2016, and I'm here to speak about it. I hope you.
You have to speak really loud in this.
Could you speak up, please?
Sorry.
I think you can pull the mic down.
Yeah, just hold the mic.
There you go.
I hope you guys will consider about keeping the program. So I want to share my story. I graduated 2016, no, it's 2017. 2016, I didn't have any direction with my life or career, and then I wanted to be in the beauty industry, and Johnson County was one of the schools that was affordable for me. And after I took that, I started to get a lot of hope, and I learned a lot from the school. And after I graduate, I learned a lot of skill sets that got me started on my own business, where I didn't struggle. And ever since then, I, a lot of my clients even hear me vouch for Johnson County aesthetic program, and they wanted to attend. To me, we are like the best in town, because I get to know all of the other schools in my industry, and our school cares the most, and people learn the most out of our program. So it changed my life, so I really hope that you guys consider about keeping.
What did you say? You changed your what? Sorry?
It changed my life.
Okay.
It opened a really good career path for me. That's all.
That's all? Thank you. So my takeaway is that it changed your life and it had a positive impact. I could, we could barely hear you. I don't mean to be insulting at all, I just, is that a fair summary of what you said?
Yes.
Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I don't believe there's anybody else, correct? So the next item, I thank you all for being here to represent that program. The next item on our agenda is the Board Report segment, and our first report tonight is from the Student Senate by Apuna Gonzalez.
Hello again.
Good evening.
Currently, so for the report about Senate, currently, we have open elections for new senators and secretaries. We have 10 current standing members. We are hosting our general assemblies on Mondays from 1:00 to 2:00, and MTC 211. And we just, this week on Monday, had our first general assembly where we had good attendance. This semester, we are hoping to expand the awareness about Senate and how it can help students. Some events that we already have planned is Trick or Treat for Kids, which we have held every year, and this year it will be on October 26th. And we will also be holding JCCC Gives, and the date for that will be to be determined. And the goal for Senate that I have is to make sure that we are going to clubs and organizations to make it known around campus what exactly Student Senate is and how we can help the students, and just make sure that they know that we are here as a resource on campus for them.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions for Apuna? Trustee Ingram.
Apuna, earlier, when you were speaking, you addressed yourself as a student still in high school here at the college. Are you a senior this year?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So you were here last year with your brother and have now assumed the responsibility of Student Senate at this college as a senior in high school with being here at the college. I just want to make sure everybody hears that. That is, as, you know, Trustee Rail just said, I mean, that's marvelous. It's fantastic. And I can't outdo anything that she said earlier. I'm not going to try, but thank you for clarifying that for everyone.
Who's next? Trustee Smith-Everett.
Thank you. I have a special request. It's very selfish, and I apologize for it, but I have missed the trick-or-treating the last two or three years. We had a little pandemic get in the way, so that caused some problems. Would you mind sending a note to the president's office that they could send out to us? That is such a wonderful event that you do on campus, that everybody loves seeing the little kiddos in their costumes, and I love getting to be here and be part of it, and I definitely want to plan to attend. Secondly, I echo everything that ironically the women on the board have really noticed, which is you are really remarkable at such a young age, which that passion in you will take you incredible places, which I will be so proud someday to say it all started here, when she was Senate president, right? So thank you so much for being here twice tonight.
Thank you.
Trustee.
If there's any suggestion that Trustee Cross, Trustee Hamon, I didn't notice it, I'll give you my earlier comments, and she's going to blow her brother out of the water. So we all noticed it, but thank you.
Any other questions? I just wanted to ask, I had one brother that went through Student Senate. Is it a useful network to you to meet other students and have anything resembling a support network?
Yeah, I think that is really useful, to be able to connect with other people, especially around campus, because Student Senate, we are trying to hear from students all around campus to get their input about what needs to be fixed, or issues that they're having, or stuff that they even like about campus that we want to continue doing. So I think that it is a good way to network.
I just wanted to ask your opinion. Do we get to see you again?
Next month.
He's going to present the revenue neutral appearing.
Any other questions for Apuna?
Thank you.
Did you have something? Sorry?
No. We're just figuring out how she does it all.
Thank you very much, Apuna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next report tonight comes, well, it's scheduled is for our college lobbyist, Mr. Dick Carter, but he is not here this evening.
Correct.
The report is in the packet. Should you have any questions, I'd probably just direct them to Mr. Carter or to Dr. Bowden's office. Thank you, Apuna. And so then I'll move, unless there's any objection, I'll move on to the next report, which is from the Faculty Association and Dr. Andrea View. Good evening, and thank you for being here in this new location.
Yes, thank you. I am Andrea View, and I am the president of the JCCC Faculty Association. Get really close to the mic here. I do want to say, even though Apuna left, the reason why I knew about that Startland Fellowship Program was because of Farrell and faculty development. So I don't want to take all the credit for that because they're, you know, thinking about networks, Farrell passed that along to me, and then I was able to pass it along to some students. So, thank you, Farrell. Last Friday was the JCCC Employee Picnic, and it was a very well-attended event. I believe many of you were also there and so experienced that firsthand. Lots of folks brought their kids and families to play games, eat food, have a good time with their colleagues. I want to thank staff and faculty development, and then all of the volunteers that put all the work in organizing and running that event, because it really was a great thing for the employees. This morning, I was reading an article in NPR about younger folks and their views about the future, and some interesting things stuck out to me. In a question about the future and whether they expect to be better off, worse off, or about the same as their parents, 62% of the respondents, and these were ages 18 to 34, said they would be better off when it comes to having the opportunity to get a great education. 58% said they would be better off in having the freedom to choose the job that they want. In another question of how various factors have affected their ability to achieve their vision of the American dream, 62% said opportunities in higher education, including college and vocational training, have done or will do more to help them in the future. The only other item in that survey that got higher responses were positive feelings towards family and friends. These are very encouraging and optimistic responses. Younger people value higher education. They understand the opportunities that colleges like ours create, and they think that institutions like ours are going to help them become successful in the future. Will we meet their expectations? Will we be the folks that help them achieve their goals? Will we continue to be the beacons of hope for the future? These are important things for us to consider. Who are we as a college? What value do we place on providing those equal opportunities for student success? What value do we place on ensuring that we can hire and retain the best and brightest employees so that we can fulfill our mission, vision, and values? Tonight, you will make decisions that impact our current budget and the future of this college. The choices you make will have effects on services we provide to the community, to opportunities for our students, and the quality of life for our employees. I've spoken here before about the problem of inflation and rising costs. It's important to be clear about the difficulties our employees face when their wages do not keep up with the increase in the cost of living in this county. We have single parents and single-income families working here. Rising costs and flat incomes mean they cannot afford to buy a house, to pay for childcare, to pay the increasing cost of healthcare, to pay for necessities like food and gas, or to pay their continually increasing rents. Sure, they can dip into what savings they do have, but that only lasts for so long. Eventually, the savings dries up and folks start falling into poverty and/or hoping nothing catastrophic happens because they no longer have the savings to pay for major unexpected expenses. As an institution, it means we can't recruit the best-quality applicant pools or retain folks who can make more money at their weekend job than they can make here in two weeks or even a month. What is the signal we send to our employees who are struggling to make ends meet when we cut the mill, knowing wages are not keeping up with the cost of living increases over the last several years? We often talk about employee recognition, showing our employees we value them, and building trust of our employees. The best and easiest way to do these things is to ensure that they are paid consistent with the work that they do. The best way to ensure our employees remain satisfied in their jobs is to make sure their wages keep up to the cost of living here. I have heard plenty of discussion about enrollment and the questions of why our enrollment isn't what it was during the height of the recession. There are many reasons for this, as some of you have pointed out, such as the smaller cohorts that we're seeing coming throughout middle school and high school right now. Enrollment booms during recession periods are outliers. Data scientists would tell us that comparing overall trends to outliers is not appropriate. In addition, many of the folks who were here during that time have noted that classes were overly crowded, and there was difficulty finding place to have classes, such that some were moved into conference rooms, making conference rooms inaccessible for meetings. Looking at enrollment alone does not tell us anything about the level of service we provide, such as our academic resource centers, tutors, and student success coaches. Furthermore, short-term thinking fails to account for the long-term benefits of higher education. Folks who achieve degrees and certificates here, and those who transfer to four-year institutions, become productive members of society. They are less likely to turn toward actions, which creates lower crime in the future. They are more likely to become tomorrow's workforce and taxpayers. Our institution helps people lift themselves and their families out of whatever hardships they may be encountering. We enable people to get their lives back on track so that they can be contributing members of society. Only thinking about dollars makes no sense. Now, I acknowledge that you all must think about the property taxes our communities pay to support the high quality of education we provide. Certainly, our community members are part of our stakeholders, and they ask us to consider both the costs and benefits of our program. Let's not forget about the benefits that we provide. Let's not forget about the expectations for community programming and services that is very often left out of conversations about budgeting in public organizations. Let's not forget about the parents and students that rely on our institution to better themselves and expand their job prospects. Let's not forget about the future contributions our students will make to society. Keynesian economists tell us that in good times, you save money so that you have the money when times are tough. Short-term thinking about the mill will have long-term implications for the quality of services that we can provide. What legacy will we leave for our future? Of course, being a political scientist, I am also aware of how political compromise works, and why it's important for governance. The Faculty Association opposes any cut to the mill. The administration proposes a 0.5 cut. The compromise there is 0.25. In last week's Management and Finance Committee meeting, one noted that they were planning to ask for a 0.6 cut. The compromise then would be 0.3. Last spring, one person noted they want a whole mill cut. That means the compromise is 0.5. You are the trustees who are charged with overseeing this institution, and this decision is yours. I do appreciate the time that you're taking tonight to listen to various points of view and come to what you believe is the best decision. I have definitely been feeling the weight of my new role, and I know that you feel the weight of yours. I have tried my best for this institution, its students, and employees, and I believe that you all can say the same. I just want to say to, you know, the people watching in the future Youtubes, I apologize to everybody who's hoping that I can convince people to go with the FA position on this. I've tried my best, and unfortunately, I don't believe that it is good enough. To change subjects, I'd also like to briefly speak about the Cosmetology Program recommendation that was forwarded from the Student Success Committee. One of the reasons why I think faculty voice and committee days is important is because it would enable us to ask questions about recommendations and proposals. For example, what is the community's perspective on our cosmetology program? We've heard from several people that noted that it is actually very positive, that we are viewed very positively in the community. What is the range of entry-level salaries? When we look at a single number, is that the bottom, the mean, the median, or the top? And we've already heard that some of our students are getting placed in above-entry-level salaries. So looking at that alone is not helpful. Why would we not be able to move the program to the main campus, keep the equipment and personnel at their current levels, and give the program an opportunity to serve students that we have on campus every day? Why would keeping the program require five new faculty lines? Why have we asked Cosmetology to put a pause on their program and do curriculum revisions only to turn around and terminate the program before that's implemented? These are the things that came to mind when I was reviewing the agenda. Lastly, I will give you some fun highlights, because I'm going to try the sandwich method. Harvest Dinner was Friday, August 25th. As many of you were actually there, you know that the dinner raises funds for scholarships for sustainable agriculture and the student scholarships. And we got to hear from one of the students whose life was chained from being in that program. JCCC Center for Sustainability, the JCCC Foundation, and the faculties such as Jay Antle and Rebecca Lane organized a great event with food crafted from local ingredients prepared by Chef Sarah Nelson and her staff from Ombra. The appetizers were prepared by our own dining services folks. About 170 folks attended, and a record of $15,000 to $20,000 will end up going to student scholarships as a result. I've been informed this is about three times the normal for that event. Overall, a great event with a great cause with amazing results. So really, again, another thank you to all the people who made this event what it was. Your work does not go unnoticed, and the community support you've generated for sustainable agriculture is very much appreciated. I also want to say that this year, we had two corporate sponsors, Evergy and Putumaki. A huge thanks to both of those companies for their support of our Student Center programs, and we're very appreciative of their sponsorship for this event. Finally, I've also recently learned about the work going on in Center, Colorado. I don't know if any of you have heard of this, but in the last couple of decades, this town has experienced a pretty large population decline, which led to economic downturn. Crystal Anton, who is in our JCCC Center for Sustainability, is working to revitalize that town. She's purchased several buildings and is working with the community, as well as a nonprofit, to renovate a storefront, a movie theater, and other buildings, to make spaces for community gatherings and a senior center, and to involve local artists in the creation of murals and sculptures. Fine arts faculty from JCCC, Professor Mark Cowherd, and some of his students actually installed two of his works in a renovated motorcar garage, and he currently has a long-term exhibition in that space. Artist Tomohashi Jackson stayed to utilize the studio space while they were visiting the Great Sand Dunes. It's actually quite close to the Great Sand Dunes, I'm told. And our artist, Ron Rayel, is working with Crystal's husband to 3D-print historically accurate Adobe homes to create more affordable housing in that area. So with that, I will.
Sandwich method.
Yes.
Any questions for Professor View? Trustee Rail.
Gosh, I have a lot I want to say. I think the first thing I'll say is my compliments to you again for the articulate way in which you express your opinions. It's very much appreciated. I'm aligned with much of what you say, but I wanted to make a couple of comments. I think there is little argument that education changed lives. I'm a first-generation college graduate, changed my life and changed the lives of my children, and God willing, it'll change the lives of their children. I don't think anybody would debate that. I wonder, though, while our institution remains accessible for most people who would like to further their education, does higher education as a whole remain as accessible for my children's children as it was for me? That's a question that I have, not one that you can answer, obviously, but it seems that education is becoming out of reach for many people in this country because of their demographics. The other thing I wanted to comment on is when it came time for me to purchase my first home, that was an easy choice for me. It was very affordable. I had a working-class job. I was 23 years old, and I was able to buy a house. That will not be true for my children, because the cost of housing has grown so exorbitantly. It's not unique to the people who work here. It is a problem in our country. But that rising cost of housing has led to an increase in assessed valuation, which has led to higher taxes, which has led to a tremendous burden on taxpayers throughout the county. So our job, then, is to find the balance between, the compromise, if you will, between the additional burden on taxpayers, and by the way, it's not a neutral tax, whatever language you finance people use. While the mill levy is being cut, the tax revenue is not being reduced because of the increase in valuation. You'll correct me if I have that wrong, but I think that's right. So our taxpayers are still paying more, so our job, arduous though it may be, is to find the balance. I don't have the perfect answer. If I had the perfect answer, I'd, you know, be making millions somewhere. But to find the balance between the burden on our taxpayers and the benefit to our institution, that's what we are called to do as publicly elected folks. That's hard. That's really hard. We'll try the best that we can. Know that you are heard. I heard everything you said. I still have that hard decision to make. There are a lot of other things I could say, but I'll stop there, and I'll look forward to our coffee.
Yeah, thank you.
Once I get it on the calendar.
Thank you, Madam, Trustee. Anybody else? Trustee Smith-Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to echo the same thing. It's hard to respond on the spot. You had a lot in your comments, and I feel like the best response I can give is equal to. Trustee. to Trustee Ray, which is I, for myself, have heard you, but the decisions we have before us are still quite difficult to navigate. So just know that. I appreciate your comments.
I'll say, thank you for, for being here. I'd say, as someone who sits in this chair because women voted for him literally in, in the community and then at this board, I think after your comments and Trustee Ray's comments and Trustee Smith Everett's comments, it's, it's one of the reasons I wanted to do this. It's nice to have this course about the appropriate direction that the college should go. I concur with much of what Trustee Ray and Smith Everett, Trustee Smith Everett said. Could you do me a favor? Could you bring charts like Steve Ratner style and, and take us through them? Because as you're rattling off numbers, I just wish I could see charts. I'd like to see you do that, but that's my preference. Data trends, not appropriate to compare to outliers. And I think Dr. McLeod has said that. I think that's something, he got into my brain last year, the year before, and that the, the enrollment numbers that we had at the end of the, or during the Great Recession thereafter were indeed outliers. I think she articulated, I think you were saying that I just want to show somehow that we're all on the same team here. Kenziean economists, I don't remember anybody ever raising, I, I agree with you. We have to put money away for when we need it. Thank you for your comments on cosmetology. You know, sustainable agriculture is near and dear to me, so I, I appreciate that. Did you say Center Colorado?
Yes. I'm told it's closer to New Mexico than it is to Denver, but other than that, I'm not.
We went by there this year. It's very close to the Great Sand Dunes. So there's a lot of ghost towns in Colorado. And more relevant to perhaps this room in this state is Kansas. Kansas and Colorado, Kansas, I think, leads the nation in ghost towns. So in case anybody was wondering the relevancy of that comment, I thank you. Look, I support you in the FA's position. I may vote a compromise here or reserve the right to any argument, but I appreciate your opinion and I'll be quiet now so we can move on, but.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions, comments for Dr.?
Mr. Trustee. I'll say I really hate to be redundant when we have these kind of conversations and when people speak so eloquently, I hate to say, yep, I agree, but, you know, it was so well-spoken and Melody Rayels, her comments as well, were so perfectly represent what our job is and I can't say any better than that, but it was that important that I want to recognize on those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have hope for a female president yet or wonder which country is missing its prime minister when Melody Rayel speaks, so. The next item on our agenda is the Johnson County Education Research Triangle by Trustee Muzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Johnson County Education Research Triangle is funded by a 1/8 cent sales tax adopted by the voters in 2008. It funds the K-State Olathe Campus, the KU Edwards Campus, and the KU Cancer Center. For the month of August, we were, continue to be up over the August of 2022 by 7.0%. We continue to be up often because of the inflationary impact when you're using a percentage sales tax. Our next meeting is at, is on October 30th at 8:00 a.m. at the K-State Olathe Campus. Those are open public meetings if anybody would like to attend. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee. Any questions, comments for Trustee Muzel? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, and I'll recognize Trustee Ingram as I remembered her tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. KACC met in Concordia at Cloud Community College on August 25th and 26th with all colleges across the state being represented. We did hear a presentation from two captains from the KCK Police Department about the dangers of fentanyl and steps colleges need to have in place to potentially save the life of one of their employees or students. Having Narcan available on campus and ensuring campus security is carrying Narcan on their person were two suggestions. We had a discussion with Senate President Ty Masterson related to higher education funding, structure, and policy. The discussion was wide-ranging and covered many barriers for students and colleges. Program-to-program articulation, community colleges offering select bachelor's degrees, and ways to improve the Promise Act were discussed in addition to other legislative items. Speaker of the House, Dan Hawkins, and Senate Majority Leader Larry Allen also participated in the discussion and all legislators expressed their appreciation for the great discussion. And I'm going to go ahead and add, Dr. Brown was there. At the end of that, I did raise my hand as a trustee who is going to be leaving her position and I said, they had spoken so positively about community colleges and what they offer, particularly here in our state. And the one thing that I did say was, please keep in mind as you're meeting, in meetings, ask who is there representing community colleges? Because I feel like we have really elevated that in the past couple of years with Heather Morgan as our executive director. And so it's kind of a sideline, but I just felt like I needed to say that on behalf of all of us sitting here who understand the importance of community colleges and to really hold them accountable to make sure that they were asking who is there representing.
So the next person needs to ask, who is representing community colleges in that?
Absolutely. Well, I think we need to just hold our legislators, you know.
I agree.
Accountable for that. So anyway, a tour of Cloud County Community College Renewable Energy Programs was taken. Cloud was the first college in the United States to implement some specific wind energy training programs. I thought that was really interesting. They have significant business and industry partnerships for these programs and their students all have jobs prior to completing their studies. Cloud trustee Bruce Graham, who started the Renewable Energy Programs at Cloud, also gave a great presentation. We also took a tour of their Cloud Community College Childcare Center, highlighting how they use the center to help their early childhood students complete their training and the benefits of their center helping with the lack of childcare in that particular area. A perception survey exercise was completed and views of presidents and trustees were discussed. Additionally, hot topics in higher education, which had recently been in the news, were discussed, which included the public perception of the value of higher education, the community college students' need for higher, high-quality customer service, the return on investment for community colleges, and legal implications to remember when utilizing certain human resource practices. An update on the Jayhawk Athletic Conference and the Legislative Post Office Audit, excuse me, related to community colleges was also discussed. It is believed that the completed post audit will be presented to the Legislative Post Audit Committee in December. That audit is examining where Kansas Community College athletes are from and how scholarship and operations are funded. An update was provided related to Community College Economic Impact Study. Each institution will be receiving their own report in addition to the statewide report and they should be completed for their first review by mid-September. Work began on our legislative agenda, which will be finally approved at the December meeting. We also had a routine business meeting and our yearly financial audit was completed with no findings. We will meet again in December, December 1st and 2nd. We will go across the state to Liberal at Seward County Community College. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. Is that December?
It is December.
Liberal?
Yes. December 1st and 2nd.
Any questions for Trustee Ingram?
My question was, this is my own naivete.
Sure.
Do they, do we annually have legislators and Masterson and you spoke of one other?
Dan Hawkins.
Dan Hawkins.
Right.
Is this an annual thing or was this a special occasion?
I think it was a special occasion and sometimes they want to come and talk to us. You know, it kind of depends on, on what's happening and what's the latest and, yeah. So it was their, their request to come and speak to all of us. So most often what will happen is depending upon we are, where we are in the state, we'll have some representation from that area.
Right.
But this was a little different.
This is, sounds like a lot more leadership.
Yes, and they were, I think they were in that area to begin with and so they collaborated on that. So the other thing I wanted to tell you as well, you had asked the question last time about if they had a calendar ahead to know where we are going. They do not. The next meeting following our December meeting will be at the PTK meeting, which will be held in Junction City probably in April next year, but that's not, they haven't decided that. So I would do want to follow up with that.
Yeah.
That concludes my report. Yes.
Trustee Rattan, then Trustee Ray.
You mentioned an economic impact report that's coming out. Does that mean it's going to find out the impact of JCC on the Johnson County economy?
Yes, that is the plan. It's, it's part of an effort taking place statewide for all the community college to participate in their service area, which would include us and, and the service area in Johnson County.
I would, I would be very interested in reading that when it comes out. I anticipate it to be significant.
Trustee Ray.
I'm just curious, do our campus police officers carry Narcan?
I, I did ask that question. Did you?
They don't carry it on their person, but it is available in the, in our police department and in our emergency safety kits.
Okay. Is that in the patrol vehicles? So is it accessible?
Yes, but it's subject to temperature fluctuations.
So we don't always keep it in the vehicles.
Got it. Thank you.
And to add to that, I think that that would be just a nice little quick update report for us in student success, just to give us a two-minute on.
Please. Please.
Please, okay. So that would be great if we could make sure that that happens. Thank you.
Anybody else over here? Narcan, are security and police carrying Narcan now? Is that a standard?
They're not carrying it on their person, but we, we have it in the police department and in our first aid kits.
I know, but through, I'm asking if we know, like in private security or in, in any other campus police departments, is, has that become an industry standard, if you know?
I really can't speak to that, I'm sorry.
Question that popped in my head, I'm sorry.
It's certainly a trend for first responders to be carrying Narcan in the field, absolutely.
Thank you for that.
And I think one of the things, when I spoke to Dr. McLeod about it, was the difference that we don't have the residential halls that some of our colleges have too. So, you know, there's, there's just some differences that I won't go into further explanation, but you did mention that. So I did have some questions about our own, so thank you for.
It may be smart to store it in certain buildings, that it's a safe, safe place in a building that may be closer than going all the way back to the police station to get it.
Maybe do that.
That's the first aid kit.
Of the first aid kits, duh.
Anything else? Senator Masterson, who else was here, the legislator?
Dan Hawkins.
Speaker. What did they talk about?
Um.
Was it statewide mill levy?
The statewide mill levy, essentially. But it didn't generate a lot of, of interest.
I understand. I just wanted to raise the issue.
Yes.
Can I show the public everything you wrote? Is that, look, look at how much time and attention she put into that report. Did you write that or somebody write it for you?
I'm not going to tell. No, it actually comes, I added to these two. It comes from Heather Morgan and, and we try to be consistent throughout the state so that we're all sharing the same information with our boards.
I wasn't trying to out your ghost right there, I was just.
It was ghost written.
It's, it's impressive. Thank you, Heather. Any other questions for Trustee Ingram? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is a foundation report by Trustee Rattan.
Thank you, Trustee Cross. Our report for September is that we do have some enchanted evening coming up on 11/11/2023, 11/11. And of course, as most, most years, we are close to selling out. We have already exceeded our income goal that we set at the beginning of planning. If you'd like a table or seats held, please contact Joy ASAP, which I need to do. Event updates, we did have a harvest dinner, which people have mentioned, on August 25th and it was a great success. This supports the future of sustainability at JCC, JCC. We talked about we had two sponsors for the event. We raised four times what was raised for the prior year's event. Save the date for next year, August 23rd, August 23rd, 2024. We had another event called Wildlife. It was benefiting the Nerman Museum. It also was a great success last weekend. Close to 400 people attended the event and enjoyed food, music, and art, which was a great combination. The live auction was a centerpiece of the event, but the greatest success was bringing together community members who were focused on supporting our incredible museum. I might add, I attended, the best thing was the people watching. Everyone was dressed in like animal print and someone was dressed like grass. More than $350,000 net was raised through the event ticket sales, sponsorships, and the auction. In addition, we've applied for a $100,000 grant to support the restoration of Leo Villarreal's Microcosm Light Sculpture that hangs in the entry of the museum. We will find out if we're awarded in October. Another event is coming up, so mark your calendars for September 21st at 5:00 p.m. The Inn at Meadowbrook. It is a party that is going to be hosted by Lifestyle Magazine. It will benefit the fashion, design, and merchandising student scholarships and we will have student scholarship recipients speak at the event and you're all invited to attend. Continuing on with scholarships, the JCC Foundation has been collaborating with financial aid to award fall scholarships for the 2024, 23, 24 school year. And today, we had our biannual scholarship luncheon event. 115 scholarship recipients, ours VP'd, to attend and we really enjoyed hearing their stories about the impact of their scholarships. We had four of our trustees there, I believe. We are, we also honored scholarship donors at this event. Greg had one of the donors talk about the impact and it goes both ways. The next meeting for our fall, the next Board of Directors meeting for fall is going to be September 19th at 5:30 p.m. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Trustee Rattan? Seeing, Trustee Ingram?
I would just suggest you weren't dressed like grass, but you looked pretty wild the other night.
Thank you. It was fun. People watching was great.
What'd she dress up as?
Are there pictures?
Oh, I'm sure there are.
There's always pictures.
It was great. Everyone was animal print or wild. It was great people watching.
Yes, it was.
Very good. Any other comments, questions for Trustee Rattan? Thank you to Trustee Rattan and the foundation. The next item on our agenda is from the College Council by Mr. Jason Arnett.
Good evening, everyone. Just a little bit for the taller guy. I don't think I have anything controversial or hot topic, so we'll just kind of run through this and make it.
What are you here for?
Well, you know, I could make something up, but normally, I mean, you've already heard from faculty, they're part of us, the board cabinet are all represented. So I talked to you guys about staff council and counseling, the updates that we get in those meetings every month. Staff council met earlier this week and got a presentation from Marquise Harris on his projects and everything that's going on with inclusion and belonging. Staff council will host a town hall on October 10th. We'll Zoom it. It'll be available to everyone to watch and ask questions. Counseling, and this is an incredible figure, counseling assisted 3,984 students in August and that's in-person and virtually. That number does not include everyone. They helped via phone and email. So they were very, very busy during August and they're, they're kind of ramping back down now, so it's good for them. They're also working on a couple of projects associated with mental health, so stay tuned for more on that. College council is now exploring an oral history project around shared governance here at JCC and that will go straight into the archives for future scholars to study and find out how we're doing things. Our Subcommittee on Communication will invite individuals from across campus to participate in focus groups generally about communications and trust across the college. And then we're working closely with institutional planning and research for that and we'll hope to have a report sometime in the spring, what we find. So that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Arnett. Any questions for Jason?
I do have a question.
Trustee.
In terms of the presentation by our new Inclusion and Belonging Director, we hear a lot from the faculty who have been part of the initiative to get this office in place, but I just wondered if you could give a sense of staff's understanding, feeling, history with inclusion and belonging and having a new director and a new office for it?
I was late to the meeting, so I didn't get all of the presentation, so I'll answer as best I can. I, I believe that our understanding was that we'll be involved in some form or fashion that, that we'll have access to Marquise and his staff and when we have concerns. And when we have concerns, he says he has a very open door policy and asked us how best to communicate with everybody. So we shared our thoughts with him at that meeting, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you, Mr. Arnett.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you being here. See you next month. The, that concludes our board reports. The next item on our agenda is the revenue neutral rate hearing. And I'd like to open the revenue neutral rate hearing for public comment. Anyone that wanted to address the board during this hearing needed to have signed up in person outside of this temporary boardroom 15 minutes prior to today's meeting. And I don't believe we have anybody signed up with respect to the revenue neutral rate hearing at any rate. Seeing that no one has signed up to comment from the public, I will close the revenue neutral rate hearing. Can I just do that? The next item on our agenda is item number eight, the 2023-24 budget public hearing. I'll open the 2023-24 budget public hearing for public comment. Anybody that wanted to have addressed the board during this meeting needed to have signed up in person outside of this temporary boardroom 15 minutes prior to the start of this meeting today. We have no one signed up, and so seeing that no one has signed up to comment from the public, I will close the 2023-24 budget hearing. In which case, the next item on our agenda is the committee reports and recommendations. We'll start with the management and finance committee report by the man, the myth, and the soon to be missed legend, trustee Musel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The management and finance committee met 8:30 AM on Wednesday, September 6, 2023. The information related to that meeting is on pages 2 through 11 of the board packet. We just held the revenue neutral rate hearing and the public hearing for the fiscal year 23-24 budget. Those public hearings represent the culmination of a year-long process that starts and will start this month for next year and started last September for this year to reach the process where we adopt a budget for the next, I guess, the fiscal year we're actually in. We start with preliminary budget guidelines that are adopted in December, and the budget administrators throughout the campus then provide input, and the administration provides a budget workshop with recommendations in April. We then consider a management budget in May. We publish notice of our budget in July, and we hold our budget hearing in September. And then we start all over again for the next year. At this point, for the 2023-2024 budget, and then we will eventually consider both a resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate, which means we would take a penny in more than we did last year from property taxes, and we will have an adoption of the 2023-2024 budget. I think, Janelle, were you going to present on the budget, which really relates to both the revenue neutral rate and the budget?
Can you hear me okay? Great. Thank you, trustee Musel. My name's Janelle Vogler. I'm our vice president and chief financial. Speak up?
Yeah.
Please, yes.
Okay, hopefully you can hear me now.
Here we go.
Sorry, there seems to be a problem with my voice, so. All right, so I want to start off by saying there's already been quite a few eloquent statements made on this topic tonight. So it's my privilege to step in and speak to you about the remaining step in our 23-24 budget development process. Trustee Musel stepped through a lot of the parts that we've gone through as we got to this point. So I'd like to say we strive for a participative and transparent process. What you're about to see is the combined work of over 100 budget administrators across campus as well as many other members of the campus community and this board and the many meetings that we've had leading up to this point. As Chair Cross indicated, we just went through the revenue neutral rate hearing and the budget public hearing. By statute, that revenue neutral rate hearing needs to be held between August 20th and September 20th, so this meeting was perfectly timed for that. And in a minute, we'll go through the recommendations. But first, I have a few slides just to refresh your memory on where we've been and how we got to this point. So this is just a quick look at the budget development calendar. A lot of those steps we already went through, we are at the September items. Once we go through the recommendations and the vote tonight, the final step will be to file our adopted final legal budget with the state and county offices. And then we'll be right back here next month to start the process again for next year. Okay, so in summary, a few highlights of the budget that is being considered tonight. The budget assessed valuation growth this year was 11%, which was, would have generated an additional seven, or I'm sorry, $13 million in tax revenue. Because of that, we had recommended a half mill reduction in our mill rate. It was discussed earlier, and it's true that although we are reducing the mill rate, our overall tax collections that will come to the county, I'm sorry, to the college will be a little bit higher. That will generate an incremental tax revenue of $6 million for the college. That mill levy reduction is the fifth mill levy reduction in the past six years, and will save our taxpayers around $7 million compared to if we'd left the mill levy the same. That mill levy rate exceeds the revenue neutral rate, which is at 7.7 mills, which is what necessitated the publication and the hearings that we're having tonight. Our tuition and fee rates will remain unchanged from last year. And as part of that, we are also increasing the College Now grant from 200 to 250,000, and those are funds that we use to support access and affordability for our resident high school students to take dual credit courses with us. On the expense side, this budget provides for an average 2.75% increase for faculty and staff. We are not changing the total number of budgeted faculty and staff positions. We have additional investments in our employees with a 1.8 million allocation for that job architecture project that is underway. It also supports around 370,000 in additional strategic planning initiatives that have been prioritized to help us achieve that strategic plan and the initiatives behind it. And finally, it does include certain budgeted inflationary increases for things that we're aware of, like supplies, equipment, certain software costs, things like that. Those are also included in this budget. Okay, so the next two slides are just a graphical view of the overall revenue and the overall expense. As you can see, the tuition and fees is about 15% of our budget, 26 million. Ad valorem collections, about 68% at 121 million. Then we have 15% that comes from state aid, and I have a little more information for you on that in a coming slide, and then a small amount for other revenue that the college receives. Okay, on the expense side, salary and benefits are around 77% combined of our budget, which I took a look back at the last 10 years, that percentage is pretty consistent. It's ranged from about 72 to about 78. There is a couple of outlying years when we had a much higher capital expenditure budget, for instance, when we did the science labs two years ago. Then we also have about 18% for current operating, that supplies, equipment, professional services, things like that. And then 3% is allocated to capital expenditures and another two for debt service payments. Okay, so a little closer look at the state funding that the college receives. The top section there, that's our operating grant that's based on enrollment, and that we're predicting around 25.6 million in the coming year. The bottom two sections are more restricted funding. So the middle is our career and tech ed capital outlay funds and technology grants, and those are restricted to very specific purposes. And then we also had in this year coming up, a couple of new funds from the state. We received 200 or will receive about 250,000 in cybersecurity funding and around 2.9 million for apprenticeships and business and industry initiatives. So the last bit of information for you here, you've seen this slide multiple times. This is the numerical view of the budget that we're bringing forward for you tonight. You can see there's a small contribution to reserves projected in that budget of around 244,000, which makes it essentially a balanced budget. We feel that it supports key student employee and strategic initiatives. And as was discussed earlier, we did have an increase in property value, which allowed us to reduce the mill levy so that we could get it to the level that we think we need to support operations. So that's what I have prepared. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Janelle from Ms. Vogler? I don't have any.
I just think it's important for the public to know, just to reiterate, that our questions may be limited now because this has come before committees and the board in several iterations over the last several months. And you can find that on our JCC YouTube channel, where we do ask a lot of questions, and now it just comes to us deciding and voting, essentially. So I just wanted the public here tonight, thank you for being here, to know that there has been a process in place for many months.
Mr. Chair, we have two things we have to consider tonight. The revenue neutral rate resolution, whether or not to exceed the revenue neutral rate, and then adoption of the budget. I didn't know if you thought it might be better to just have all discussion about the budget overall and then act on those two, as opposed to splitting them up into separate motions and discussing each motion. I think we can do it any way we want, as long as we act on the two motions.
Yes, we have to have a separate vote for the revenue neutral rate.
I appreciate you raising the issue. I would prefer we do it all at once. I didn't anticipate it now. I mean, we have no motion yet before us and no discussion, so.
Well, if I move to adopt the revenue neutral rate resolution.
Yep.
We can talk about that, and then we can talk about the budget afterwards, but they're so intertwined that I didn't know if it might be, I'll do it either way. And I should have brought this up earlier, Lee. Do you want me to just make a motion on the revenue neutral rate?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
It is a recommendation of the management and finance committee that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to adopt a resolution to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate for the 2023-2024 fiscal year, as found on page four of the board packet, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made by trustee Musel and seconded by trustee Ratan. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, as Janelle told us, if we want a revenue neutral rate, we cut the mill levy to 7.7 from 8.6. If we don't, if we want anything less than a point, 8.6 to 7.7, anything less than a 0.9 mill decrease, we're going to exceed the revenue neutral rate, and we need to pass this resolution. So I don't think, there may be support for revenue neutral rate on the board, and I guess we can get rid of that, but I don't anticipate making all my comments about the budget until we're acting on the budget itself. We have to exceed the revenue neutral rate, in my opinion, and that's why I will support this motion.
Trustee Ratan.
I just wanted to make a comment to make this real for the public that I looked up the average cost of a home in Johnson County. It is high. Between three sources, it was ranged between 409,000 to 472,000 as the median, the median sale price of homes, and I can cite those sources for you. But I took the rate of $450,000 as a median price. And given our average mill, our proposed mill rate of 8.1, your homeowner would pay about $419.20. So it's a little bit over a dollar per day to support this institution.
Thank you for that. Trustee Smith ever.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Probably just because I'm in an election cycle, I've had several people ask me what this means, what neutral, revenue neutral means, and Rachel will correct me and Janelle will correct me as soon as I botch it, which will be in about 15 seconds. But I explained that it's basically the legislature tying our hands that we cannot spend a penny over. And is it year-to-year increase, or is it from the year that this was initiated, which was 2020? When was this initiated, the revenue neutral?
This is the third year we've done the revenue neutral.
2020, when we first started?
2022 fiscal, 23 fiscal, 24 fiscal.
Okay. So are we, is the revenue neutral from year-to-year increase? Okay, it is not from the initial, that's what I always think it is, but it's not. So essentially, the way I've explained it in conversations is, do your groceries cost the same last year as they do this year? Does your gas cost the same last year as it does this year? Does your, do your light bills cost the same last year as it does this year? That is essentially what is being asked to us, that we have to incur the cost of more expensive things from purchases to utilities, and that we have to have this hearing to declare that we have to take more dollars to be able to pay for those things that, as we all know, are in an inflationary period, has gotten much more expensive much quicker than in years before. And so I just wanted to say that, to be able to articulate that here up on the dials.
Thank you. Trustee Hamon.
Yeah, talking about the revenue neutral rate, I don't exactly love how it was put in place, although I do understand why it is, why we have it, and why we went down this path. But it's not revenue neutral per average individual, but it's revenue neutral for the whole county as a whole. And when we add population growth, it should be figured out how to be, I'd rather it be more per individual than per county. I think would be a more helpful tool to get a better idea. Going revenue neutral actually gives you a, most people will get a tax break because of spread across more people. Some of the things that I am more concerned about that I think we should be looking at is, there's quite a few properties that get tax exempt status from paying property tax, and that puts a burden on some individuals over other individuals. And I hate picking, letting the government pick winners and losers when we're looking at tax rates. And I'd feel a lot better about it if it was spread out more evenly across the entire county. There's a few things I want to bring up, and I'll probably wait till the budget to talk about. One of the things that, this has been really a struggle for me to figure out what to do. Obviously, I love this college, and I'm a third generation product of this college. I absolutely love it, and I'm expecting my kids to hopefully go here at some point in time and all the other individuals that it's helped and benefited over the years. And so I've struggled back and forth on exactly where I want to be. And I was hoping Greg Musel would give me something that would help me make my decision a little easier as well. But as some of you know, I did taxes for quite a while, and a lot of people think of it as just looking at numbers and spreadsheets and W2s and receipts. But it's a lot more than that. It's a much more intimate process doing taxes than people realize. You get the same person sitting in front of you every year on the phone, and they're telling you the event of their last year, their life, and you're hearing, you're celebrating their marriages, their kids, their new jobs, their increase in their wealth and whatever else. You're also dealing with death and the things that go along with that, and loss of child and divorces and all the things you're going through. So it's a very intimate process, and you really get to hear their life story one year at a time. And quite often, you'll get people that are just telling you, spilling their life story as you're doing their taxes for them. One of the stories that I heard that had a major impact on my life was a lady who, we did her taxes, and this is a lady who we were basically only charging her 25 bucks to do a home set act because her income was gone. She was living on fixed income, all she had was social security. And we realized that she did not pay her property tax last year, and we're like, you don't have any money. We're not going to charge you this year, but you got to sell your house, or you're going to lose it. And she was in tears explaining to me that she's only lived in two houses her entire life, the one that her parents provided and the one that her husband built with his own two hands. And she had lost him years before that. And she felt like the idea of selling my house makes me feel like I'm losing my husband all over again. And I've heard some other stories at the Evergy meetings, things like that. People talking about they're struggling to pay their property taxes, struggling to pay their utilities. And I really would like to say, I don't think Johnson County Community College is the biggest reason by it. One of the things that Dawn said is, you know, just barely over a dollar per day for some. And there's other people, I think, that are, and again, the work that went into this thing. When I looked at my tax rate, the lowest increase was from Johnson County. So obviously, the due diligence we put in there to be as careful as we can with how we spend our money is very obvious that we're trying. But the idea, the lady that I'm speaking of sold her house, moved into a retirement home, and passed a few months later. And it just, it terrifies me to think of that. To me, I don't see another, from that story alone, I don't see any other way of being theft, and they couldn't wait a few more months to let her live the rest of her life out before they came to take her home. And again, I'm not accusing anybody here of anything of that nature. And obviously, we're weighing this very carefully, and I know everybody has their heart in the right place. And Melody said it so well, I couldn't say it any better than what she described it with. with the rising prices of housing. I feel more comfortable in what my kids can afford college than they can afford a home in the coming years. But I think I'm leaning towards revenue neutral, as where I'm probably going to be. I really wish there was a little bit better explanation on how to get more revenue neutral per individual and less per county, but that's where I'm going to leave it at.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee. Many other comments? Trustee Reil.
I'm not ignoring you.
I may regret making this comment, but I'm going to make it. Wouldn't it be wonderful if everybody in the private sector had to get permission before they could raise prices? Wouldn't that be awesome?
Or bonds, or...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Closing comment. First of all, there are a number of economists, including Greg Musel, that would argue they do, because if their customer doesn't come back, their customer comes back and voluntarily pays for something. So I don't think they just do it and mandate that on any of us. But I just want... In our budget book in April, we have the average home price, going through what Trustee Ratan said, the average home price was $432,000, and with this reduction, that home will pay $23 more in taxes to Johnson County Community College than it paid last year. So that is some reflection, I think, of the relative amount that you're going to have to pay to Johnson County. Mark's right. We're a relatively small piece of your total tax bill, K-12 and Johnson County and your city, library, and those other things, but I thought that number would be helpful during the revenue neutral rate. $23 more for the $432,000 home. That's all I have on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee. Trustee Musel, it's my understanding that we can change this number later in the budget process? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, the first motion is simply, are we going to take one penny more in property taxes than we did last year?
Well, not exactly. It adopts the resolution on Page Four.
Which is simply to exceed the revenue neutral rate. We're not adopting the budget yet. Once we adopt the budget, you can change that during the year if you are going to spend more than the total amount you've placed in there. You have to do that through another public hearing process.
I think you're a good lawyer, and I don't want to give you the argument that I voted for 7.739 and locked myself into that.
No. You're voting for 7.71 or higher. You're not voting for 7.7, which would be the revenue neutral rate.
Oh, that shall levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Okay.
That's the first vote.
Thank the gentleman for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call the motion to question, please.
Motion's been moved, and seconded has been called. Any further discussion on this matter? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the resolution on Page Four, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The motion passes six to one. Trustee Musel.
The next item on the agenda is the actual consideration of the budget for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. The recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of College Administration to adopt the fiscal year 2324 legal budget as presented, and does hereby certify said budget to the County Clerk of Johnson County for the collection in the manner prescribed by law, and I so move, and then we'll comment on it if I get a second.
Second.
Motion has been made by Trustee Musel and seconded by Trustee Ratan. I think now we have the discussion on the 2024 budget. Trustee Reil.
So I think this is the more difficult discussion, right, is what are we going to do with the mill levy? And I'll just make my comments very brief, because I think I've made these comments before. I will support the .5 mill levy decrease, but only on the promises that have been made on this board, that if things that are uncertain right now cause us to need to raise the mill levy, that we will give due attention to that as well. I think we're striking a balance between taxpayers paying more, and certainly, we can't, you know, perform this year on the same amount of money we performed last year. But by gosh, if we have to raise the mill levy because we need it to give this institution what it needs in the coming years, hopefully, that will garner as much support as this decrease is garnering. And I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. Any other discussion? Trustee Ratan.
Not to compare ourselves to a city, but we're pretty large. I looked up also the city that had a similar population to us, and that's Marion, Kansas, has about 11,000 residents. And for perspective, their mill levy is 27.665. They plan to lower it to 27.415. And I can show you many other cities that are in the 20s for mill levies that have no intention of lowering it, or if they plan to lower it, they still plan to stay in the mid to 20s or higher. So just for perspective, we are in the single digits and have been for several years.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments, discussion here?
I can't let a budget opportunity go by without speaking to it. This is my 13th budget, I think, that I will have considered at the college. How many, five out of the last six years, we've lowered the mill levy? Every year, we have taken in millions of dollars in new money because this county is successful. I have always believed we are entitled, if you will, to take some of that growth to improve this college, to maintain it and improve it, because we cause some of that growth. We lead to economic development and people wanting to come here, create jobs, find jobs. And so I don't apologize for taking more revenue in than we had last year from property taxes. What I have also think I've been consistent in saying is, we need to be careful. Trustee Bob Drummond taught us a word that we use a lot in other contexts. We need to use it in the financial context. We need to be sustainable. The amount of our budget, the percentage of our budget that comes from property taxpayers is 68%. When I got on the board, it was 56 or 57%. And what Mark talked about is important, and what Professor Vu talked about was important. One of the things we differ on, Andrea and I think, is who the "we" is. When I hear "we," are we going to sustain this college? Are we going to take care of our employees? Are we going to help our students? I think of the taxpayers out there that are having the same problems with inflation on healthcare, and food, and gas, and cars, and housing, as our faculty and staff are having. And they're the ones we're asking to pay more money. We have budgeted for 2.75% in raises in salary for our employees. That, I believe, is $2.6 million. We have budgeted for $1.8 million in additional salary to our employees for the career laddering and the employee review we're doing. So that's $4.4 million in new salary. We also are going to consider tonight, and we have $7 million in the budget for salary and benefits. So on a benefit side, we're budgeting another $3.6 million. And we're going to consider tonight a health insurance of 7.5% increase and a dental insurance of 5% increase. That's why I can support something above the revenue neutral rate, because we have the same costs, and we're trying to balance those so that the people that are out there facing those same costs themselves in various situations can afford their lives too, and can have a chance to perform and maintain their lifestyle. I was initially thinking we should cut the mill levy more, and Mark and I talked about that, and Professor Vu mentioned the .6 mentioned at the board meeting last time, and this was me, because I wanted to look at giving another increment back to taxpayers based on what the state of Kansas had increased its budget to us this year. What I realized is that the state of Kansas probably increased its base budget to us by less than a million dollars. I think it's $933,000. The additional money that the state of Kansas allocated is one-time money. We don't rely on one-time money to up and down the mill levy. We look at the priorities and the trends and our strategic plan over the years. That led me to conclude, after a lot of thought, that .5 is as much of a decrease as we should take this year. I am convinced the state of Kansas ought to be supporting this institution more than 15% of our budget. I'm also convinced that tuition and fees need to support more than 15% of our budget because of opportunities like Pell Grants and scholarships and even student loans that can help our students afford what is still the cheapest, most economic rate in Kansas. So when I look at this, I think a half-mill decrease that the administration recommended is the right place to land. Instead of taking $13 million in new money, we will take something over $6 million in new money. That's not a... Taxpayer, property taxpayers aren't going to jump up and down and cheer for that, but I think it's the right thing to do. We're giving that back to them. If we kept the mill levy the same and took in $13 million, our budget people have told us, we don't need that much to have a balanced budget, so we would put $7 million into our reserves, while our taxpayers out there are paying more in taxes. I don't think that's the right thing to do. If this college gets in a situation where it needs to raise the mill levy because of economic circumstances or otherwise, I'll come back to the open comment period and support you guys doing it, because I voted for a mill levy increase on this board of 3/4 of a mill, as did Trustee Ingram, as did Trustee Cross. It's easy to reduce the mill levy and call yourself a champion. It takes courage sometimes to raise it, and I'm convinced this board will do the right thing, as it did in the past. So that's why I'm supporting the .5 decrease, and I'll vote for the motion.
Just know if you come back, you need to sign up 15 minutes before the meeting.
Yeah, I do want to make one more comment. This is our April budget book. I've done this for several years. If you don't think this college is transparent about its budget process, please come see anybody on this board, see Vice President Leers, see somebody about the process. And the book that's out there on our website in public, and the book that will be out there when we adopt a budget, that tells you everything you need to know and more about where our money comes from and how we spend it, what our reserves are, what our five-year pro forma is. It frustrates me to no end to know that we have people under Rachel and under the President that work their tail off for a year and then get accused of hiding things. Nothing is hidden here if you care to ask a question. So when we vote on it, we vote on it as a board, on a policy. But it's not anything secretive, it's not anything hidden, and I would defy somebody to prove to me that it is. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I know Trustee Ingram is next, and I... Trustee Smith Everett.
Oh, I will be short and sweet. I appreciate you bringing up the transparency piece, because for the last eight years, you've brought that up as I have sat here, and I think I share your frustration when we hear that out amongst the community, or it gets raised in certain conversations that we are not transparent. So thank you very much. And really, the only other thing that I wanted to say, because I think it is important, that, you know, as we sit here and vote, and we will not be here next year, I think it is really important that we will come back, and I'm going to speak before Trustee Musel, ex-Trustee Musel at that point, but we will come back and support you all with this, because we realize the situation is really, really tough, and it probably gets tougher every year. So I will support the .5 as well.
Trustee Smith Everett, then Trustee Hamon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to illustrate on Page Four, the beautiful graphic we get year after year about how our revenue comes. And when I was first a trustee, I learned about the three-legged stool, which is supposed to be when the college was developed in '60? Was it '60 or '59? They developed it with the understanding that a third of the college would be paid for with local property taxes, a third would be tuition and fees, and a third would be state aid. I want to just say, for my part on this board, and as we get new board members, this is one of the reasons why it is critical that we have a voice with our legislature, because the state aid has decreased year over year over year. The burden is on local taxpayers. It's very difficult to go out in the community and say, we are taking more money again. It's very difficult to make this decision each year, even though it's half of what we could take. In my own example, I looked up my tax statement while we were sitting here, and for my tax bill this year, my family and I will pay $200 twice, so $400, little over a dollar a day, as you spoke about. And meanwhile, the school district, I pay $1,000. The Johnson County government, I pay $800 for a year. And so we have investments in this community, and it shouldn't be just the burden of local taxpayers. So please speak to your legislatures. That's for everyone here and everyone at the dais, that community colleges need support, as well as our local governments need support from our state. That's part of what their purpose is supposed to be, even though sometimes that's lost on them. And then the other thing is, you know, I think what's really critical, what I've thought about and understood over the three and a half years I've been here, is that this is a community asset for anyone in the community. So when we're talking about people having less pay or being stuck in jobs where they can't pay the bills, and the real estate market is probably out of hand and will correct itself at some point, people can come back to this institution to better themselves and to increase the pay that they get, and to make a better wage. And that's part of what we are reinvesting in when we pass this budget, that we continue to be a place where our community can come to better themselves. And so that's weighed with the tax responsibility for the burden that we're placing on taxpayers. And then I just wanted to echo Trustee Reil's comment about raising the mill levy. Every year, I've been thrilled to vote in favor of lowering it, and I am just holding my breath for the year that we have to raise it, because I remember that, and I remember the attention it got. And so reminding people about the history will be critical at that juncture, because it will happen at some point. And if we believe investing in this college now is just as important as in the future, we will have to have that discussion and remind people how often we took less than we needed to. So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. Trustee Hamon.
Thank you, Trustee Gross. So my comments are, there's been a few things over the last year that I have voted no to purchase. One of the ones that comes to mind is a smart classroom. Again, there's a lot of great things about it. I'm not trying to hate on those things by any means, or the work that goes into it, or any of those other experiences that students get. But sometimes I think we are buying too many wants to go along with this, and there are times that we can afford the wants, and there's times where we can't. And, you know, this might not be the right time to be buying the wants and trying to figure out exactly what's a want and what's not. Everybody's got a different opinion, and I'm not saying mine's always correct. I'm just doing the best that I can with the knowledge I have. But I would like us to really think about those things over the next year when we're purchasing some of these things that we're looking at, and really be really critical on, you know, can we skip this one possibly, or kick it down the road for another year, just so we don't have to be in a scenario where we do have to look at raising the mill levy, and we can hopefully be more careful with, obviously, the public's been really good to us over the years by helping the college, and the college is very good to the public, and trying to help us balance those needs, especially during times of critical. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll take the opportunity to comment. I thank everyone for their comments and their work on this budget. I know it takes a considerable amount of time, and so I thank Dr. Bound and Vice President Leers and everyone, Janelle, that put time and effort into this budget. I agree with Trustee Musel. It's done in good faith, and it's done with exceeding transparency, so thank you all. You know, I think the UAW offered, demanded 40% in their opening negotiation, and it have come down to, I think, 36% is what I've heard on various news sources. And if we had no increase, that would be an additional $12 to $13 million, based upon the math that I've heard here tonight, to meet the inflationary pressures that we'll face next year. And so I did some math. I hadn't done it, but it occurred to me, it might be 2.75. We've gone up every year since the master agreement last took... Is it 2.5 or 2.75?
7.5.
2.5. It varied each year, right? And so culminates at 2.75. I think last year was 2.5, and the year before was about that.
So we've had some raise each year to combat what we've seen in the last three years, that two different administrations have pumped money into the economy to keep it alive. So we've been doing, and I thank this board and this administration for doing that. I will say, frankly, I'll just adopt in whole Dr. Vu's comments, and I appreciate her being here tonight. her being here tonight. And I don't see the faculty, let alone the adjunct faculty, as a want, with all due respect, trustee Hamel. I see the people that teach our students as critical to meet our mission, and so that's why I oppose this mill cut. I do understand and recognize that it does raise extra money, and I thank trustee Musial for his eloquent articulation of his position. And I'm certainly glad to serve with you, sir, as you are very thoughtful in what you offer and what you argue, especially compared to many alternatives. So I appreciate the statements. I just, I don't know how sustainable this is, right? In terms of not having the three-legged stool paid for by the state. I agree with you, the state should pay more. I've said that, I think, from the time I took the board. I think it's time. I've advocated and argued with two different administrations, although not necessarily this one, for keeping tuition and fees low, but I think that we need to look at that in all prudence and fiduciary responsibility, because we're way behind inflation on that number. I think trustee Musial's right, we're the cheapest and most affordable alternative in the state, and many of us have fought to keep it there, and I thank the trustee for recognizing that. And yet, I think it's time we raise revenue there to help balance the burden on our taxpayers. I will come help raise the mill, I'll come to the podium. I'm going to hold you to that.
If it's warranted.
I think.
Kind of blackjack.
I just think it'd be easier to raise the mill next year if we don't touch it this year. I do think everyone recognizing that, I think, I've said it for some time, and I think trustee Smith Everett has too, that inflation is just, it's going to be a big problem. But as I do the math on the individual increases every year, it's not as bad as going from, you know, $100,000 in July of 2020 to what that would be today. So $100,000 in July of 2020 would be, I believe, I had it, I think it'd be $110,381 today, according to the inflationary calculator through, I think it's CPI. So I think it'd be easier next year if we don't touch the mill. I agree with transparency, I've already commented on that. Trustee Musial talked about transparency and people making accusations about the mill not being, or the budget not being transparent. Decisions are made by those who show up, and we have a lot of people in attendance here today, and we have people come talk at the open forum, and I appreciate everyone being here and being a part of this process. This college means the world to me, and I thank you all for being here. As trustee Smith Everett said, please talk to your legislators. I don't mean this to disparage anybody, but if our founding fathers saw the Kansas tax scheme and how goofy it is, and the racket at which we collect taxes, what is it, the first 20 mills on the K-12 budget goes to the state, because the state doesn't want to let you know that they're taking the first 20 mills, and all the different random ways that the state collects taxes, it's just goofy. And somebody should say it. So I've said it before, but I'm saying it now. At any rate, we've chosen to do a property-based mill rather than an income tax, or being more honest with how we do our taxes at the state of Kansas. I'll oppose this mill decrease, but I respect the comments and everyone that offered their positions here today, and I think it's all being done in good faith. I just disagree with the approach, so. Unless there's anything else to be said, I'll, the motion's been moved and seconded. What's that?
So you would like the mill to stay where it is?
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you wanted to go up or down.
I wanted to leave it alone. I mean, I'm not such a liberal line that I want it to go up all the time. Yeah, I would leave it where it is, and that would give us extra money to play with next year, and we could certainly cut into it next year if we needed to, but, I mean, I don't, UAW's at 36%. I don't know if the faculty are going to ask for that next year, but it's going to be a considerable rate that they ask for next year. And I asked Dr. Bound in a meeting two days ago, where are we going to get the money? You know, it's not going to be a quaint 2.5%, 3% this time. It's going to be a significant number, and at 6 or 7 million, I mean, it's something to build off next year, I understand, but it'd make next year easier, and I'll say so next year.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other discussion? Thank you for asking. The motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 And those opposed?
No.
The motion passes 5 to 2.
The next item considered by the Management and Finance Committee was a report by Ann Louise Fitzgerald from the Office of General Counsel on legal and regulatory compliance program, which is kind of coordinated by the Office of General Counsel, but done by each and every department. I use the term "culture of compliance," which is being, which has been and continues to be maintained around the campus to make sure we comply with various rules, regulations, and laws. Rachel Leers, Executive Vice President for Finance and Administrative Services, presented the Facility Rental Agreement template that we use for rental of Johnson County Community College facilities. That can be found on page 39 of the board packet. Tom Hall gave his monthly update on capital acquisitions and improvements, including the GEB first-floor project currently under construction, which kicked us out and moved us to this temporary board space, as well as other capital acquisitions and improvements. There's a detailed matrix that he presents every month to talk about where our capital dollars are being spent. In addition to the budget recommendations, we have a couple of other recommendations we need to act on. These are procurement items. The first one is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the low bid from Lindy for a total expenditure of $152,368. This is for welding equipment in our welding program, and I so move.
Motion has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been moved by trustee Musial and seconded by trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion here?
I just had a question, Mr. Chairman. I apologize, because I know it's already a long meeting, but this appears to be a virtual reality welding, and I wondered, I was not present for the meeting where this was discussed, and just wondered if someone could explain a little bit about how that will benefit our students, or the program, or why it's needed.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Virtual welders allow us to give the student a welding experience that does not continue to cost the college for the cost of gas, steel, that compounds throughout their program, so they have an opportunity to supplement some of the live welding with virtual welding, which then draws down the cost of the program.
Okay, thank you.
So it's like a flight simulator?
Yes.
Any other questions, discussion?
Maybe just to build on that, if I may. Not only does it reduce the cost from an operational standpoint, but the feedback that students get is in real time. I mean, it literally has the sound, the feel, the look, as if a student was actually laying a bead. And so it is a tremendous learning experience that actually speeds up the learning process and increases safety and reduces cost. So it's a win-win all the way around.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unless there's any further discussion, all those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Trustee Musial.
The next item is for Miller Dynasty 300 welding machines, actual welding machines this time. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid from Lindy for a total estimated expenditure of $194,933, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by trustee Musial and seconded by trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion here?
Mr. Chairman, once again, I'm very sorry, but I did want to know what, if this was to expand our welding capacity, or to replace with newer things, or just a sense of what this is doing.
These are replacements of some of the machines that are phasing out due to age. When we expanded the building to add the 90 slots, we took the old gear and put it into the building, and then filled the extra bays that were new with new gear. And so now.
This is going to help move the ones that are aging out. I have taken a year off of teaching to help my brother launch his company, which is helping to staff, and the number-one position that we cannot get filled is welding. It is in demand, and anything we can do to support it, so I just wanted that to be made public, that I completely support welding. I just want to know what it's going for and what we're doing, because people in the community know that welders are in desperate need and are always asking about our program. So thank you for that.
As former trustee for life, Jerry Cook used to tell me when he thought I wasn't paying attention, like, we need your critical eye, so don't apologize for your critical eye. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Trustee Musial.
The next item is the technical training courses for our adult supplementary education for technical trainers to deliver computer technology courses for our continuing ed program. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the single-source justification to micro data systems for $150,000, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by trustee Musial and seconded by trustee Ingram. Any discussion here?
No, it's cold. It's freezing.
Any discussion here? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
The final item on the Management and Finance Committee agenda was the BNSF-NARS, National Academy of Railway Science, training courses. And this would be to provide education training for continuing ed class, railroad classes for BNSF Railway and the National Academy of Railway Science. These courses satisfy proficiency requirements for people in the railroad industry. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the single-source justification to BNSF Railway/NARS for $160,000, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been made by trustee Musial and seconded by trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion here? How many people go through the BNSF program in a year?
That differs from year to year. A lot depends upon the number of trainees they send to us, but we normally see something on the order of 300 to 500 people.
Then how many people will this affect, this adult supplementary education course?
Adults up always kind of hits a few thousand folks, but it depends on how it is disseminated. Some of it, like ESL, is done in smaller bites, and so you tend to see several hundred people be able to come through for a single course. They might not make their way all the way through from Level 1 to Level 5, but they may be complete Level 1 in a year and then come back after they've been employed for a while and try to take Level 2, and continue to increase their skills. So it depends upon the year.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Well, we need to vote on this, just a second.
I'm sorry. Let's vote.
All those in favor, any other discussion, excuse me. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. You think it's an accident, I call you a legend. Well done. The next item on our agenda is the Audit Committee, and apparently I'm giving that. The audit report can be found at pages 12 through 14 in your packet. Sheryl McLeod presented results and recommendations with respect to the bookstore operations audit, and also provided a review of the biannual travel and expenses. And Ms. McLeod reviewed the annual trustee expense report and noted travel expenses followed approved college resources and reimbursement guidelines, so good job, guys. Audit and Advisory Services Quality Quarterly Activity Forvis Update was presented by Joe Zarkowski and Jennifer Miller of Forvis, who attended by Zoom. Mr. Zarkowski presented Forvis's role in assisting the audit and advisory office with conducting the annual internal audit and risk assessment, compiling the fiscal year 2024 internal audit plan. And then the rest of their presentation is listed there. There are audit recommendation follow-ups, or the JCC ethics report line, and a quarterly summary of statistics report was given by Jay Vignola. And then we had a JCC behavioral intervention team presentation also given. And so you can read that in your report there, and I'll ask trustee Ingram or Dr. Bound, who was there with us also, among many others, if they have anything to add.
I don't think so. The working agenda was something that we took a look at, but.
Yes.
Yeah, that was it.
And that's at page 14. Thank you, I skipped over.
You're welcome.
And I think you should give this report. I talked too much. Any questions on the Audit Committee?
We do have a next Audit Committee meeting in November. You might announce that as well.
We have an Audit Committee meeting in November.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Collegial Steering, and I will note that Dr. Andrew View and other faculty members, Dr. McLeod, Gerber San Singh came in a little bit late, but trustee Ingram and I were there yesterday. We introduced each other and discussed goals of the committee and other issues pertaining to the mill, where I learned what Dr. View would say here tonight, in large measure. Just kidding. But at any rate, I find it to be a useful meeting in which we talk about the development of relationships and knowing each other, and that the faculty have some input into have relationships with us so that they can help educate us as to what goes on here. I think it was Dr. View who said that the faculty should have a greater role in Committee Day. Was that you? And I concur. It just helps us have a window into the weeds. You guys do a good job. I'm not, I don't want to be you, and I really don't enjoy grilling you, but it's just nice to know what goes on here, so that we have some idea. At any rate, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that that has been brought up a couple of times. It's probably something for the board to consider as they move forward and go into committees for next year.
Yeah, I would like to have more faculty input. I don't go to all the faculty meetings. Me and McLeod think I just hang out with them all the time, and I don't. I don't have time, my law practice took off, but they are near and dear allies, many of them friends of mine. But at any rate, I find it useful, and I thank the administration for what they do do, and for Dr. Bound to going back to Committee Day, as I think we just had a survey on that, so. Unless anybody has any questions about Collegial Steering, I'll just keep talking. Very good. Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is the Employee Engagement and Development Committee by trustee Ingram.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. The Employee Engagement and Development Committee met last Wednesday, September the 6th. Ann Griffith, Julie McKee, and Pam Winterman with Fine Line HR Consulting provided an update on the engagement with JCC. Ms. Griffith has met with each member of the HR team and will complete meetings with cabinet members by mid-September. Follow-up conversations will continue throughout Fine Line Engagement. The intent of conversations is to solicit and gather feedback on current HR processes and procedures, identify what's working, and also to identify areas for improvement. Ms. Griffith is meeting weekly with Dr. Bound and several key leaders to provide updates and gather feedback. Next steps will be working with the HR team to prioritize a list of process improvements, develop action plans for each, and create implementation and communication timelines. These efforts will result in improvements on HR processes and provide clarity and ongoing communications with JCC and users. Fine Line HR Consulting provided an update on their assistance with the search process. They will remain engaged with JCC and onsite to ensure a seamless transition for the new HR leadership. Natalie Croy with Culpeper and Associates provided an update on the job architecture project. All job review or position description. project, all job review or position description questionnaires, which we know as PDQ. Meetings were completed as of August 24th. Cabinet members received a collaboration grid for review of internal consistency across their organizations. Next steps in the project will include JCC-wide collaboration to finalize job leveling and propose standardized job descriptions based on those PDQs. Culpeper will deliver standardized job descriptions to JCC, and leaders will review them to ensure duties and responsibilities are adequately captured. The project continues to run on time, and Culpeper expects completion by the end of 2023. Michelle Oldy and Matt Wheeler with Holmes Murphy presented the employee benefit plans renewal information for 2024. Mr. Chair and the board, I do have two recommendations to bring forward pertaining to their report. We learned that claims for medical plans are tracking higher than the contracted target amount. The initial renewal premium increase was projected at 15%. However, through negotiations with Blue Cross Blue Shield through 2024, the rate increase will be 7.5% for medical coverage. It is the recommendation of the college administration to renew the Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas City contract for an employee group medical insurance through December 31st, 2024, as shown in the board packet on page 16, and I would so move.
Second.
Motion has been made by trustee Ingram and seconded by trustee Rail. Where's the recommendation?
Page 16. I found it hard to find as well.
Yep. Thank you. I'm sorry. Any discussion on this motion? Trustee Ratain.
The discussion that I have for future is with the rising costs of healthcare, many employers are passing on some of those costs to employees in a reasonable manner. And when I look at our Group Two employees, the rate for 2024, the family rates, the family rate of 196 is 6% of cost share for an employee. On the next two, the PPO, Blue PPO, and the Blue Select Plus PPO, it's 5.3%. And as I talked with Dr. Bound, he said typically in higher education, they are lower, but Google, not research, Googling, because I'm not, I haven't researched this. I find quickly that the average cost share is 19 to 29% of cost share. So we're well below all industries, and I could not find what higher ed's average was, but it's just a point to consider the next time of a little bit more employee cost share. This is definitely a retention tool for employees because healthcare is so expensive. So I, I'm not saying raise it to what the industry is in 19 to 29, but we do have a lot of room to move between 5.3% and 19% when we talk about cost share. So it's something to consider in the future.
Thank you. Any other discussion, any other, trustee Rail?
I would just point out that Holmes Murphy has been assisting the college for quite some time, and they do a terrific job. And I hope everybody picked up on what trustee Ingram said, which was, had we gone to market, the anticipated increase was 15%. Holmes Murphy was able to negotiate with Blue and keep that at half that, at seven and a half percent, which is just terrific and a, and a real benefit for, for everyone. So shout out to Holmes Murphy.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Trustee Smith Everett.
I just wanted to mention, I remember when I was chair of what used to be HR, we actually got a refund for the year post-COVID, and they warned us over and over and over that that had never happened before and that there would be repercussions quickly coming down the line, and here we are. So I, I agree with you, I was going to mention that too, that the negotiation for seven and a half is really worth everything we do to contract with Holmes Murphy because that's a huge savings for as many employees as we have, so.
Any other discussion? Thank you, trustee Smith Everett. Seeing none, all those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Can I continue?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. A rate increase of 8% was projected for dental, Delta Dental. Through negotiations with this vendor, there will be a 5% rate increase for dental coverage. This is the first rate increase since 2017. Mr. Chair, it is the recommendation of the college administration to renew the Delta Dental contract for employee group dental insurance through December 31st, 2024, as shown in the board packet on page 16, and I would so move.
Second.
Motion has been made by trustee Ingram and seconded by trustee Rail. Any discussion on this point? So it would have been an 8%? Did you say that?
Correct. It would have been an 8%. That was projected.
Five.
Right.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, that actually concludes my report. I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to share.
I have nothing. Well done.
Okay. Well, if I, could I just add?
Sure.
One other thing, we continue, and I think it's just important to remind everyone when we do meet with employee engagement, that we continue to carry that, we want to get this right. So I just want to remind everyone that's still kind of our mantra as we're going through with all of this job work that we're doing, and just wanted to, to mention that. The one question that I did have that was asked of me recently was, is, maybe the best way to ask it, is there some sort of a flow chart? If an employee has a concern about something, what, what is the best way to handle that since we don't have anyone in that position as?
I would encourage them to reach out to the HR department. The HR department is there to serve our employees.
Okay.
And so if it's a benefits question, they approach the benefits team. If it's a compensation question, they approach there. If it's related to employee relations, there as well, so.
Is there a safe place for someone who is in the HR department who has a concern?
I would say that there are a number of options. One option is to come to me as president. Another option is if there's a deep concern, that ethics point is one of our options to use.
Okay. And I appreciate that, just because I, just good for people to know. Thank you to be reminded. Thank you. And I might just say, it's not directed at anyone or a situation, it was just a question that was brought to me. So I wanted to make sure that I addressed it. Just a question in general.
Were you sick that day?
Yes.
That's why you weren't there?
Yeah, I was feverishly sick.
No, no, I.
Thursday.
I'm trying to embarrass you.
We missed him. It's good that, yeah.
Thank you.
You had told me, and I just didn't see your name in the.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
And the next item on our agenda is the inclusion and belonging committee. Trustee Ratain.
Thank you, Chair Cross. The inclusion and belonging committee met at 11:15 on Wednesday, September 6th, in WCMT 111. Marquise Harris, the executive director of inclusion and belonging, introduced a new administrative assistant in the department, Emily Tresner. He also discussed the new Very Well Done logo for inclusion and belonging, the four core values of the Office of Inclusion and Belonging, which are service, partnership, development, and hope. He gave an overview of each and how they're important and how they connect to the institution and its values. He continued to emphasize that the mission of the office will always align with the mission of the college. Mr. Harris presented key focus areas for this academic year to be assessment and awareness. He explained how those focused areas will continue to support strategic plan goal number three, build an inclusive and equitable campus culture, which includes programming and support for students and employees, events servicing the Johnson County community, training and development centered on best practices to create goals-based growth mindset. He will continue to meet with faculty, staff, and students and use evidence-based research to maximize inclusion and belonging efforts on this campus. Our next meeting is Wednesday, October 4th, 2023, at 11:00 a.m. in this room. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam trustee. Any questions for trustee Ratain? I will note that I want to thank Marquise Harris and his wife Michaela for joining Jennifer and I. Trustee Ingram and I split a table at the Harvest Dinner that trustee Ratain spoke of, and so I want to thank him for joining us. Any other questions or comments for trustee Ratain? Thank you, trustee Ratain. The next item on our agenda is the student success committee by trustee Ingram.
And I have asked trustee Mel DeRail to provide this report.
Very good.
And I have graciously accepted it, that challenge, which I may live to regret, but I'm going to go with Professor View's sandwich approach here, and you'll understand what I mean by that here in a few minutes. So we'll start with.
I've heard it as Oreo, and I like that reference better.
Well, in, in this case, it might be a backwards Oreo. The student success committee met at 9:45 a.m. on Wednesday, September 6th, right here in this room. Trustee Ingram and I were in attendance. Dr. Gurbeshan Singh reviewed the concept of active learning classrooms, the optimal design features, budget allocations, and connections to the facility's master plan. He shared with us a number of statistics, and I'll highlight just a couple of those. 77% of students surveyed believed that the technology available in the active learning classrooms has had a positive impact on the educational experience that they had in that class. And 74% of the instructors who taught in those classrooms believe that the active learning classroom helped improve their teaching methods. He also shared with us a number of really detailed room components, design features, templates, photos, and things of that nature. It was actually very interesting. Current classrooms will continue to be considered for active learning classroom renovations, and this concept will be used in future building designs as well. It was really great to hear from, from Dr. Singh about what these classrooms really look like and the benefit it's providing to our institution. Dr. McLeod then provided an historical overview of the cosmetology program, including enrollment operating costs and off-campus property leasing details. That included expenditures, support functions, things of that nature. He also highlighted a number of organizations that provide similar educational opportunities here in the Johnson County area. And following that, he discussed two options with the committee for the cosmetology program. One option recommended sunsetting the program, providing an opportunity to allocate its resources to other programs here at JCC. And the second option was to revamp the program's curriculum, commit to additional faculty and, and provide ultimately a dedicated space on the campus. We've heard a number of people take the podium here tonight to talk about this issue. No formal recommendation was brought to the committee, and trustee Ingram and I noodled this for a while and, and decided that the best approach at this point would be to invite Dr. McLeod to present the same information to the entire board that he presented to the student success committee so that we can all have the same information and, and have a robust discussion. And so I, hopefully you're prepared to do that, and, and I think that would be the best way to move forward. There will be no formal recommendation before the board tonight. This is more just an opportunity for all of, all of the rest of the board to hear the same thing that, that trustee Ingram and I heard.
You can state your name, city, and state, please.
L. Michael McLeod, Spring Hill, Kansas.
I was kidding.
So tonight you'll hear some of the exact same things, although there'll be a little embellishment because I, I will actually answer all of Dr. View's questions tonight. I took notes. So you'll get some other answers along with this particular information, and I'll be speaking to some other things. I was given to understand that there were some things that were, that were sent to board members, so I'll be addressing some of those and providing some, some responses to some of that as well. So if you look at our program basic data taken from 2020 through 2023, this gives you a, a sense of the number of students and the caps that we have had on the programs based on what the faculty, the full-time faculty had deemed appropriate, as well as what was appropriate to the space that we have over at West Park. So if you look at our aesthetics, we are looking at normal classes being capped at 14 in the fall. Fall and spring on this campus, across the board, fall tends to have more students as fall has always been a more of an entry for students. These particular programs accept folks in August, and then also a second group of folks as a cohort in January. So aesthetics, 14 student average, there's been a fluctuation between nine and 14 because of course you have 2020 in there. So you have social distancing and all of the issues tied to COVID as part of that lower number. And then in the spring, we've been capped at 10. Cosmo has been at 16, which has fluctuated between six and 16 throughout that period, and has been capped at 10 in the spring, fluctuating between six and 10. And then nail tech as a certification has been capped between eight to 10. We try to keep that at 10 students. So when you are looking at the total number of individuals who might be in the total program across an academic year, what you're looking at is 60 students effectively, if all seats are filled. Our lowest efficiency for the last day of courses was 2002. So when you start to look at attrition within a program, the, the highest attrition rates occurred during 2022 as we came out of the pandemic. Cosmo had an attrition rate that took it to 56% at the completion of the semester in terms of the number of seats filled within the program. Aesthetics was 71%, nail tech was 89%. So those are end-of-year numbers after attrition and students have dropped out of the program or moved on or determined that they could not complete during this cycle and asked to step out and step back in at another time. When you look at the way in which our degrees and certificates are designed, our cosmetology program is designed as a two-year program at 60 credit hours. Aesthetics is designed as a two-year certificate at 46 credit hours, and nail technician is designed as a certificate at one semester and 16 hours. When you look at first-year projected earnings, these are entry-level first-year projected earnings. Cosmetologists, 25.6. Skincare specialists, 26.4. Manicurists, pedicurists, 24.3. To Dr. View's question, arguing that the number is, is hard to utilize, the reality is anytime you make a decision based on a program, entry level is what you have to base any return on because moving forward in any field, once you have the degree, is beyond the institution to control. We can control what we understand as your base pay. But to answer the question of what the median is, noting that during our committee meeting, trustee Rail pointed out that 40,000 was the threshold for a livable wage. At the median in Kansas City, hairstylists and cosmetologists are at 36,500. Manicurists, pedicurists are at 30,300. Skincare specialists are at 38,300. And then cosmo, esthetician, nail tech combination positions meet the median at 35.6. As I pointed out during that committee meeting, individuals who do manage to get themselves into the upper range in terms of the 75th to the 90th percentile, at that 90th percentile, you are well into a livable wage because you are looking at about 61,000 as the average median wage. So all of these are, are average wages. As a hairdresser or a cosmetologist, 44. As a manicurist or a pedicurist and skincare specialists are at 80,000 if you make it into that 90th percentile for the job. So these numbers are what we have to base on, based on what the institution can provide a student, what they get when they walk out, not forestalling or attempting to forecast opportunities that might come to them in the field or other things that have no bearing on what we can control or provide. Our source for this is Jobs EQ. I had a couple of emails from, from folks who were saying, well, I looked out, you know, and I pulled up jobs.com. We do not use a standard website that aggregates nationwide. We use a professional service in IR here that looks at jobs posted in our region specific to ZIP codes that we serve, specific to ZIP codes that are tied to what we report to the state. So our data is accurate to what we know and what is in the data pool. I've seen a few comments that folks have anecdotal evidence of folks who make other things. I can't function on anecdote when I'm making decisions for 40,000 people. I function on data. This is what we have. When you look at an in-county sample of other institutions, the institutions that we have, all are more efficient. This slide provides us with a look at the difference between the length of our program and the length of other. length of our program and the length of other programs within the area. I specifically pulled only institutions that exist in the Johnson County service area as opposed to looking at other community college programs within the state. There are a couple because that is not where our service exists. Our service exists here. And options for our students, should we determine that sunset in this program, these are options that exist within our locality. Paul Mitchell, which has, which is the most expensive of these particular schools, but also has the broadest national and international name recognition, is a one-year program. Z-Hair Academy, which functions only in cosmetology, just to look at cosmetology only, is a one-year program with rolling admissions and cohorts that begin every six weeks. That is their curricular design, which differs wildly from ours. We are a start-to-finish program. Mitsusato Hair Academy is one year. Entourage Institute of Beauty and Aesthetics is 43 weeks. Skin Academy Aesthetics only is one year, also with rolling admissions. And so as you look at these programs, one of the things that we have to look at is opportunity costs for our students. We have not been capable of, at this point, pulling down the way in which we have designed our program and getting more efficient to be able to deliver these same folks. You know, Board of Cosmetology looks at these folks the same as they look at us. They license them just as they license us. There is no difference in the final result in terms of the student's licensure, despite what might feel like a difference in the way in which we train them, the name recognition of the institution, and all of those pieces. Over the past 10 fiscal years, the program has almost doubled its cost in terms of our general operating costs. And so here you see an outlay from fiscal year 15 through our current budget cycle in fiscal year 24, as we have climbed from $567,000 in total expenses to $938,000 in expenses. But this is not total expenditure because within that expenditure is not counting the money that we secure in Perkins grant funds. Federal Perkins grants we secure each year to help us fund our career and technical ed opportunities on this campus. $131,000 through that period came from Perkins funding, which we spread across all of our programs. In fiscal year 22, we did secure $6,500 to secure new pedicure thrones. That $6,500 went along with our general fund expenditure to make sure that we paid for those. So it was nice that the state was willing to help us defray some of that cost. We also have space issue in terms of the leasing for the programs. Our program is currently housed at the college's West Park location, as you heard earlier from some of our speakers at the podium. Our current lease term does not expire until July of 2026. However, we can terminate and attempt to look at different lease terms if we decided to, but we have to do so June 1st of every year. That was a caveat that we wrote into the last reupping of that particular piece. One of the things that is unique to this particular contract, as it has existed, the contract predates me by a long number of years before I came to the institution. But in the original negotiation of that rolling contract, any improvements made to the building are at the cost of the college. And so over the years, we also have incurred building costs and making sure that we have appropriate ventilation for the students and adding walls, moving classrooms. We've added a computer lab. We have added fiber drops that run into the building and other pieces that were necessary for us to be able to deliver the best quality of education we could there. If and when the day comes we move out of that building, the improvements stay. So we are consistently and constantly improving a private owner's facility, which is something that we also need to keep in our minds, that that is not a Johnson County-owned facility, and we are not investing in our campus in that way. We are investing in a private ownership that will be reaping the rewards in the end for what we have put into that building when the day comes that we determine we're moving out. It was also noted that Academics pays for that building and that ABE is housed there. That is absolutely accurate. However, that's not part of this particular conversation because ABE will have its moment for us to figure out how we adjust and deal with the building, should we decide that we're going to move away from these programs. That is not necessarily the death knell for those programs. It is, however, going to require that we look at how much of that space. Fifty-five percent of that space is our programs on the academic side, and 45% of that space is currently housing our ABE program. So if you look at that, that annual lease is $335,000, of which $184,000 is directly tied to the space that we attribute to this program, notwithstanding any improvements that get made. Here's a list of improvements. I believe that there was some question in some communications that board members got, arguing that this work had not been completed upon double-checking that work with Vice President Lear's. Our facilities folks have all the receipts. Work was done. We have spent the money. We have vendors who did it and who paid them. So the work has been completed, and we continue to always look at whether or not we have safety concerns, whether or not. My understanding is that the last piece, that $75,000 for the ventilation and nail classroom, is incomplete as of yet. It was only halfway completed because we are waiting for a part that is on back order from the vendor. So we have been waiting for the vendor to come and complete that particular piece of work. There's also other ongoing costs tied to the program and its site at West Park, including JCC Police Department patrol in response to calls. We do partner with the Overland Park Police Department, just like we partner with OHLA to try and answer some calls at OHAC should something happen. Our police are always en route and once on scene, take charge. But there is, of course, a first responder need should there be a need for folks to get there quickly. Information technology, equipment, support. One of the things that we put on hold as we looked at some of this was an ask for several thousand dollars of newer tablet and computer equipment from the full-time faculty who wanted us to start to move because we actually see clientele in that building, and there is an opportunity for, you know, bleeding and all of those things. We do have to keep health records for each individual who comes in. And so there was an ask for us to start to move to a more digital platform as the Cerner platform is kind of taking over healthcare. And everything that we do now, all of our health records follow us in a digital format. We put some of that on hold and continue to use the paper forms until we could determine where we're headed. There are also some other questions that I'd like to answer kind of with regard to some of these things. So the question of the two recommendations. These recommendations have been under consideration for quite some time. I know that there's been some folks who felt that there was some disingenuousness in the fact that this has been... A year ago, I have the emails. Folks were brought in, and the full-time faculty were discussing whether or not the program was going to be in trouble. We looked at some ways that asked them, as Dr. Yu pointed out, to start to revamp the curriculum. We looked at our inefficiencies. We wanted to look at the fact that we are two years as opposed to one year. We looked at what it would take for us to actually modernize the program, pull us into today, and get us the opportunity to be on par with getting those students out faster. The question of why five new faculty members? Because eight faculty members is the optimal load for us to be able to actually deliver the program in a direct three-semester fashion while bringing as many students as we possibly could in. But we also would require more space than we currently have, as some of these classes are capped not based on, you know, the arbitrary whims of faculty, but on the space actually provided within the West Park space that we have. And so when we look at the landscape, there are a couple of recommendations. The first is dependent upon other pieces that we have going on here at the campus. So the sunset provision would close the programs, take the three full-time faculty positions that currently exist there, and reallocate those positions. As I discussed two weeks ago, we currently have a $1.1 million grant that we were afforded by the federal government, which will give us equipment for CNC and machining, provided one of the main deliverables of that grant is that we provide a faculty position to build the curriculum, set up the machines, and get the program off the ground. So if we sunset, one of those positions would move immediately into the hiring for that CNC position, as we've already secured the grant and secured the funding. The second, within the business department, there's been an ask for the last three years for marketing to garner another faculty member. We have not had a position to move into marketing, although the waitlist in marketing is quite long and actually has grown. We have simply not had that position. That is a growth opportunity that we have for the institution is to invest in the marketing program. And the third position would go into the pool, as we are currently exploring a couple of options in our C-Tech building, one of which in particular is a look into whether framing and carpentry as a program is something we need to grow into. We've had an ask by the Home Builders Association to work with them in looking at building out such a program as they would be able to provide apprenticeships and immediate opportunity for those students to get in with the Home Builders Association. And then other ongoing funds that we expand, including building costs and all of those things, will then be allocated across the other programs that are currently seeing a lot of growth on the campus. Plumbing technology is in need of another lab, and eventually another faculty member. Computer Science and Information Systems is in need of more lab space, which moves us to have to move the animation program. There is currently a plan for the temporary office spaces that we are dwelling in right now to be turned into another computer lab to move animation over there so that we can start to work down the waiting lists in CSIS by providing them with the two labs that animation currently lives in. We'd be able to turn those over into another department's classes to start moving those waiting lists faster. Automated Engineer Technology, as part of our Panasonic obligations, continues to grow. We have hired a second faculty member this year, so we have been able to double the cohorts. We are, however, going to be stretched in terms of lab space with that double cohort based on those two cohorts and the partnership in completing those students through their bachelor's degree that we're working on with K-State OHLA, who is coming in to utilize the single lab that we have in the late evenings so that the associate's degree classes would be all day. And then after 6:00 p.m., we would house the K-State OHLA courses because they do not currently have a lab. As they try to work with Manhattan to get themselves a lab built, our lab will be housing their bachelor's program for completion of engineering techs. So we have some extraordinary needs there. And electrical technology continues to grow. Have waiting lists. We have redone the lab, so we are now doing residential and commercial, and we're doing residential and commercial in the same space. So we have multiple courses going at the same time in that lab space. And so that growth also continues. And so you're talking equipment costs. You talk about the possibility of future building programs and other pieces that will be funded by some of that. The second recommendation is that if we determine that we want to step into this program, for us to do for the programs what should be done in terms of increasing our ability to finish those students in a more timely manner, allow them to get out into the field, we are going to need to double down on what we have given. We're going to need that eight faculty to get these programs to be able to be designed in such a way that we have enough faculty to actually deliver the coursework to get these students out in a single calendar year. Those three semesters are fall, spring, summer, or fall, spring. We would also ask for a commitment to move the programs onto the campus into an appropriate space that provides the appropriate square footage and connects these students to campus. I know that there was some communication, because I was asked questions by a couple of people about the, that they had heard that they didn't need to move. Full-time faculty in that program have been asking for the last two program review cycles to be moved to campus. I believe, and the wording of their last program review cycle actually pointed out that the possibility of moving their programs to the main campus would create for cosmetology students more access to campus resources and services, including counseling, tutoring, opportunities to garner extra help from the AAC. It would create more visibility for a program, also allowing students to access a newer, different clientele, offer a different variety of services, and change the caliber of opportunity they have to practice. And so that support to move to the campus involves all of those pieces, but that comes at a cost. And then we would look at having at least four regular semesters to sort out where the move would come from, where we would place them. We would need to build out appropriate space and complete that curriculum revamp that was started in September a year ago. And as well as committing to funding, if we took this particular mode of operation, we would still have on the table the need to fund those positions for other programs because we would not have the positions to move from here to there, and those needs have not gone anywhere. We would still need a position for CNC. We would still need to try to meet the marketing need. And then we would still need to look at where there are other efficiencies that we can gain elsewhere on the campus. Those particular pieces are all tied up in the foundation of what I wanted to lay before you. And I will say, in answer to the question, because there's one more question that I needed to answer from Dr. Yu's comments, why I asked for a pause and then move forward with the recommendation? Because the situation at the college has changed, and we have not yet secured a way to make comfortable or a right fit what currently exists. The reason for these recommendations is because for years, we have hung around with these programs. We've shoestring them along. We either need to decide we're in or decide we're out. Both of those things come with a cost. This board is going to have to make a decision about what cost it is they want to pay. I often get cast as a villain for having to do these things. It's part of my job. I've been education 26 years. I did the math the other night as folks were emailing back and forth and talking about this. I've taught over 6,000 students individually. When I think back on the first class in 1997 that I taught in Kansas City, Missouri, I can tell you stories about folks that I had in developmental English who started at the bottom, one who I'm still in contact with, now has a PhD and is a dean at the University of Miami of Ohio. She credits me with a lot of that work. She took me for seven different classes between Penn Valley and UMKC. I also have students I had to fail. I would love to live in a world of anecdote, but if there's one thing that being a scholar has taught me, there can never be claims to uniqueness or universality that anybody can prove or that can be upheld. They don't exist. I live in a world of facts because I have to. Dr. Bowden gets to go to black tie, shake hands, talk to folks, tell them all of their ideas are great. When the ideas have to be operationalized, the guy who has to make that real is me. So I give you two options, and I put it before this board to determine, how do you want to move forward? Because we're either going to do it at the Johnson County level, and we're going to raise it up, and we're going to spend the money to do the things that need to happen, or we're going to decide to reallocate and go elsewhere. And with all of the talk about the budget that has gone on tonight, the single truth that I have had to learn since I came here is that this community believes... that I have had to learn since I came here is that this community believes that there is some sort of buried treasure out behind this college, and that we can pay for everything all the time. At some point, we can't, and decisions have to get made about where we put our resources. This is one of those times.
Thank you, Dr. McLeod. Any questions for Dr. McLeod? Trustee Musa.
Mickey, the recommendation B, and I appreciate what you put together here, and I appreciate the fact that nobody is more committed, I think, to the students here and to quality, evidence-based learning than you. So thank you for being cast as the villain, frankly, because somebody has to be, and you're in the position now, and you have the courage and the spine to do it, and to bring these kind of recommendations to us, which doesn't happen very often. But with respect to recommendation B, how many more students would we then serve? Right now, it's 60 if it's completely filled.
Yes. According to the Board of Cosmetology, at our current state, we can take 25 in any program. However, the space does not, we would have to have a larger space to be able to do it. But if we could do that, and we had a larger space, there is, at that point, the possibility of us being able to almost double the size of the program. Not quite, but almost.
So that's best-case scenario, 120 students a year.
Yes.
And I'm looking at your efficiency percentages for the last day of courses in 2022. They differ between the three programs, but if you if you took an average of 71%, which is the middle, you've got 43 students out of 60 completing that semester.
Yes.
And then we really don't have an idea of the cost, but I can extrapolate five new faculty members, taking whatever we want to take as the as the entry level for, say, the brand-new faculty, and they're they're at the low level of our pay table. With salary and benefits, we're talking $80,000, $90,000 per position.
Are they adjunct or full-time?
Those would be full-time positions. And one of the issues that we have that we have had is is filling adjunct positions.
And that will allow us to compress the timeframe, so we're consistent with the other private institutions that are doing it. Because I know one of the things we talked about was, I think some of these private ones are $11,000.
Yeah.
Ours are six.
Yes.
Is ours six a semester or six for the completion?
For the entire program, ours is about six, over the two years, counting the $2,700 for the kit that the student actually uses. Paul Mitchell is advertised at $11,000 for their program.
But they're out after a year and earning whatever those minimum salaries.
$25,000 or so.
Salaries or better one. I assume some of the Paul Mitchell ones end up starting at more than entry level, but I appreciate your your methodology that says all we control is the entry-level positions. I think that's all I have now. I appreciate your bringing this to us and really giving us some time to think about it. But I'll just say that we talk about priorities around here a lot, and we have trouble sometimes getting to them. And I lived through the track program, which was a lot more kids and a lot less cost that we decided at that point wasn't sufficient benefit to the college. So I'm happy to listen to some more comment and discussion and be prepared for next next month.
Well, and if I can can make a point, I'll also double down on one of the, well, not double down, but but look into the direction of of one of the points that Dr. View made. I'll add a little, a minor correction to understanding Keynesian theory. Keynesian theory actually argues that during any time of recession, that a that a government needs to spend more money, even to put itself into debt, because that spending puts the dollars out into the cycle and elevates production, is the hope.
Thank you.
I have trustee Smith Everett and trustee Ratan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to say that I think the top priority has to be our people. It has to be our students and our employees. And this really echoes to me the track, which was right before my time on this board, and the verb, which came to us quickly. And we were called on to make a decision that I still, to this day, don't know if I'm comfortable with. So I want to say to the seven governing members of this board, we don't have to make this decision today if we don't feel like we have enough information. And I wish I had learned that before on other votes, where I felt pressured to make a decision. I I think it is imperative, it is really, really critical, that it's the way we communicate. It is the way we take care of our people. It's the way that we convey that they are valued, they are heard, we appreciate them. I want everyone today who is here representing our cosmetology program to know that we appreciate you, and we are glad that you're here advocating for your own program. It is, we keep doing this. The thing about community colleges is we have to be nimble, so we have to make these tough decisions. But it's the way that we do it. And if we do not get that right, we are screwing our own selves over and over. And I'm sorry for that vulgarity, but we have got to be better at the way that we convey these messages. And I think that that's a really important part of this decision. From my standpoint, I have got a list of things I'm going to go through as quickly as I can. Because I was in that building for many months as an instructor, I am concerned that we are setting up a narrative to get rid of the adult basic ed and the ESL that is the other part of that that building, as listed by the the some of the points tonight. And I am very strongly opposed to that. As I've mentioned before, it is a walkable area. It is an area where that community, which is almost all apartments directly around it, can walk. And so we, I want to make sure that that continues to be open and accessible to our community, whether cosmetology is there or otherwise. If we decide to sunset, I want to know exactly how long it'll take. I want to know how it'll be communicated. And I think that it's a really important component, for as long as this program has been around, that we have a closing reception for our community and our alumni. My own hairstylist came from our program and talks about it every time I go get a cut, because she, it's it's the brand, it's the affinity to JCC and the legacy that it carries that we need to be really careful of and protect. I really think, for myself, I am in opposition of getting rid of the the program as a whole because of the legacy, and because I know that the numbers for what the salary is say that it's low for in for entry level. However, makeup and hair, if you have a teenager of any kind, anyone under the age of 30, is a hot, hot topic. And all you have to do is go to YouTube or TikTok, and you find people making millions of dollars through this. I think we can do a better job for our community with our program by bringing it down to a more manageable timeline that gets people out in the industry. And I really loved, somebody brought up at the committee meeting, the idea of pairing it with an entrepreneurial component, which would allow all of our students to then learn how to own their own businesses, or how to be able to run a program that would allow them to find out how to create an entire business model around it and not just be an employee to somebody else. The, oh, I wanted to just say, the very last thing is that I think JCC, this is one of those outward-facing components. We have the pastry program that if I, everybody on this board is lined up on a Thursday afternoon for, you know how important and delicious those are and how much our community loves them. We have our dental hygiene program, where people from the community can come and get services. I think this is another one. I agree that the clientele that are there, I have gone several times myself, and the clientele is one part of our community, but we need to expand that so that people have the opportunity to try on and get clinicals with a brighter, a broader band of people. And I think we could do that. We just passed a budget that included $6 million of updates. We are going to start the budget cycle next month. If the other things that were listed are important, put them on there. Tell, make the make the argument. I want to, I think we can do both and. I think we can walk and chew gum, and I think we owe it to our community because of the legacy of this program and because it is still vital in our economy to keep it going. And that that concludes my remarks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Thank you, trustee Ratan.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Cross, and thank you for your comments. Chair Smith Everett, I mean, trustee Smith Everett. I want to also thank you, Mickey, for additional detail. As we met earlier this week, I told you I was torn. And whereas I love numbers and a numbers girl, I also understand the legacy that trustee Smith Everett talked about. And I'm still torn, honestly, and I appreciate that. I think that we're going to go forward with no vote on this. I also want to say I appreciate the emails and calls that I've received from the community, giving additional perspective, because there are several sides to every story. Now, questions that I have are, is there an option, as you show some of our competitors, where they do a limited program, where they do only aesthetics or only cosmetology? And then part B of that question is, there's an option to do a limited one, like one of the ones you mentioned, the skincare goes up to 80K. It seems like it has a higher or faster upside. Is there a way to do it and say it's a cosmetology skincare program by Aveda, by Paul Mitchell? And we have it somewhat supported by a major brand, and we just use their products? Just trying to get out of the box and in survival mode. Then, next is, I echo what trustee Smith Everett said, and I think that we definitely, in an ideal world, would like to have some buy-in. It is a hard decision if you do decide to shut down. We need to make sure that we have involved the stakeholders. I know you and I have had some conversation about that as well, and I think that, to an extent, you have, but I think there's some more involvement of stakeholders that we could get involved in this decision, as well as communication to have buy-in. And it's never easy if we are sunsetting a program. Should we move it to the main campus and keep the program? I do think that with the intelligence that you have, and stakeholders, and people who are employed by this college, we can move it to one year, we can revamp the program, and I even think we can become best of the best. I think we do have a brand of JCC. A lot of these schools are very for-profit. They pop up, and in two years, they've shut down. And we've seen the empty shell of those businesses along, was that, whatever that street that is, off of I-35. So we do have a brand, we do have the ability to be the best with the brain trust we have here. I think reprogramming is possible, and I do want to explore the option of a limited availability of what we offer. Maybe we don't offer all that we offer. And I think that there's a lot of upside to being located here for our community, our faculty, and our students. That concludes my notes and my points. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ratan. Trustee Ray.
First, I just want to reiterate that there's no recommendation being brought before the board tonight, so there's not going to be a vote. The whole purpose here was to have a dialogue, do some more fact-finding.
Not gang up on Mickey.
What's that?
I said not gang up on Mickey.
No, not gang up on Mickey. I have a couple of questions, but I guess I'll start by saying, I applaud you guys, and I would expect nothing less than for you to come here and vigorously advocate for your program. I was on faculty here, I get it. And these decisions are hard. I feel like all night I've been saying that, you know? These decisions are hard, hard for us to make. And so we appreciate the time that you've taken to come in and visit with us, more than you probably know. It helps us understand and remember that there are real people involved. I have a couple of questions, and maybe you'll be able to answer them, and maybe you'll have to get back to me. My first question is, as I was listening to some of the comments earlier and some of the communications I've gotten over the past week or so, there's a disconnect between 500 students want to get into our program and enrollment fluctuates. So on the one hand, I'm hearing we're never fill, and as I understand it, it's a, it's a, an acceptance program.
Selective admissions program.
Selective admissions, there you go. But but if I'm hearing the numbers correctly, we're not always full. And so there's a disconnect there for me between the 500 people who want to come here and the fluctuating enrollment. Help me understand that.
When you look at the fluctuations in enrollment, what you're looking at is first day of class to last day of class, so you're looking at attrition. And the reality is, it doesn't matter, we could have 10,000 people interested. If the program seats this many people, that's how many people it seats. So the level of interest and who's on, you know, the list doesn't matter to the dollars and cents at the end of the ledger, or what we actually turn out, because the output is tied to the input, and the input, as a selective admissions program, is that there are this many seats.
Is, am I correct, though, that first day of classes, there's a but in every seat?
That has been the case in most semesters, yes.
So that clarifies that confusion for me. Another point that I wanted to make was, so first of all, I did make the the reference in the committee meeting to the current poverty line. It's at 30,000, not 40,000, so I just want to make that correction. The poverty line for a family of four is at 30,000, so say the federal government statistics. I I'm concerned, and to one of the points that that trustee Smith Everett made, I'm concerned that this may be a slippery slope for the demise of the West Park campus. And and I I guess I'm concerned whether we sunset the program, or whether regardless of which option, because we're talking about moving cosmetology out of that building regardless. And I know it's not before us today, it's not one of the things that we're discussing, but but that adult education program up there is vital. The demographics of that area are are so well-served by that program being up there, and I would not want whatever's decided, whether cosmetology and aesthetics has moved to main campus or done away with altogether, to affect that program. And I always get concerned about slippery slopes. I'm a, I'm a lawyer. We heard that a lot in law school. And so that's a concern I wanted to share. And then the the last thing I would say is, I'm hoping you're going to tell me I somehow have this wrong, because what I'm hearing is, it's costing us about $1 million a year for 60 students.
For less than 60.
That's not wrong.
That's, that's the struggle I have, is we're paying $1 million a year for 60 students. And in order to make it more students, it's going to be more than $1 million a year in capital outlay, and and that's where I struggle. Those numbers are real. The reality of of our institution is, we cannot be all things to all people. And so we have to, there is no pot of gold behind the building, right? So we, we have to to figure out how we best serve the entire community. And gosh, if if this board wants to increase the mill levy and generate, you know, another couple of million dollars so that we can pay for another, you know, 100 students, I don't think that's reality, though. So I was hoping you were going to tell me I was wrong, and I was just missing something, but I I guess I'm I'm not wrong. So I guess that's all I, that's all I have to say. Thank you for standing behind the podium, this controversial topic, hard decision. And thanks for accepting trustee Ingrams and I's invitation to come and and share your thoughts with the larger board.
You talked, didn't you?
It was very memorable. It was one of the best things I've ever said.
Trustee him.
Yeah, Dawn actually piqued my interest. Is there any way to partner with another institution and, you know, reuse their facilities, keep what they have, but somehow be involved with Johnson County as well?
Not currently. Those are, those are competitors, not and not partners.
Okay. Is there any way we could look at that, and is there any way to even make that as a possibility? Do we have programs like that?
I think we could look at it. It would not be, it would not be in keeping with with our model to do so, and it would also involve having to get private industry be willing to discount what they've already, what they're already making money on for us. I mean, one of the bigger issues here I mean, one of the bigger issues here is that we're not quite half the price, but pretty darn close.
Yeah.
It is not in the corporate interest to give away money. We do that work as a public entity.
Are you done?
Yeah, I was good.
You can keep going.
No, I'm good. Thank you. I can reiterate the same, same sentiments as many of the other ones again, but I don't really want to be redundant too much. One of the concerns that I have of moving them to campus is creating a new facility and the cost of creating a new facility. And then you also have, as far as I understand, we're pretty full between, you know, in the morning hours till around noon. And then we're looking at, we're maybe free between noon and five. But then again, how many of those facility spaces are going to be able to be used for cosmetology or nails and, you know, a math class or an English class, you know?
Yeah. There will be some customization required. There are some things that we would need to do to make sure that those classrooms were appropriate to their needs.
And then you make it harder to.
Other things that are not currently in place.
Trust, are you done? Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I mean, if there is some way to, and again, I get your point, you know, I can't think of a scenario how to make that work, but there are resources that Johnson County has that maybe similar institutions don't have. Maybe there's a way to make a partnership work, but, but again, you get your point when they're trying to make a profit and we're trying to serve the community. How do you balance those things exactly? There are different priorities.
Trustee.
I'm finished. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Ingram and then trustee Musel.
Well, a lot has been shared, and I agree with you. Thank you very much, Dr. McLeod, because when we sat through student success a couple of weeks ago, we thought we need to bring this to the board. We can't just move forward with this. The one thing that I would say, and I think what everybody is kind of coming to the conclusion of as well, no matter how they're feeling, is it's time to start thinking out of the box on some of the decisions that are going forward. And, you know, your ideas and things that you're suggesting, you know, we've got to do as much as we can with as little sometimes. And this is one of those examples of how are we going to move forward? You know, all of our hearts are with all of this. We don't want to do anything. And, and I said to you from the beginning, when you asked me why, I don't want to lose a program. I don't want to lose a program. But when you put the dollars with it and some of those pieces, that's why it becomes that hard decision that we've all reflected tonight. So I think thinking out of the box is something that we've got to be really good at as we move forward, no matter what program.
Thank you.
I'm finished.
Thank you, trustee.
I just wanted to clarify, $6,000, 2,700 of it's the kit. So there's $3,300 additional costs. Is that in the associate's program for cosmetology? And that's at our standard tuition rate of $97?
Yes.
Tuition and fees a credit hour?
Yes.
Okay. What about the other programs? That's just the cosmetology program.
That's just Cosmo. I'd have to go pull, I'd have to go pull it. There is an aesthetics kit also, but that is, of course, program is fewer credit hours. So you're talking about, instead of 60 hours, 46 hours. So you're changing that dynamic because you're lower in that cost because the number of credit hours isn't as many.
Okay. And the other two are certificates. Okay. That's what I want to clarify. Thank you.
I thank all the trustees for their comments and the administration and Dr. McLeod for the presentation. There's one viewer I know who will want to hear this. Like, Dr. Bound and I don't always agree on everything. I had disagreed with the administration on this last month, and vice chair Ingram wanted to bring this forward to the student success committee. And I'm happy to have the debate. And I'm happy that Dr. McLeod does what he, he does. I think it's Batman Dark Knight, you know, you're not the, the hero we deserve, you're just the hero we need you to be. And we, we need you to do what you do. And I, I, we especially need you on Panasonic and everything you're doing. So please don't feel like you're not respected or treasured. And I trust you to run this college, and I, I value you greatly, sir. So please don't misunderstand my disagreement for, I don't, I, I still agree to pay you. You're still here.
Yes.
And so with that said, I think that this program is at the core of the community college movement. These, these are my business cards that I've carried every day since I graduated law school. My wife bought me maybe five or 10 of those things. And, you know, there's two people you give business cards to, and it's bartenders and hairstylists. And they talk, and they see people. And I see this, this program at the core of a community college movement, and we're, it's our job to subsidize this program because from a dollar and cent standpoint, I get it. You know, we're paying $5,000 extra per head in this program than we are in the student body at large. My rough math, you know, about $170 million budget divided by 15,000 students, give or take, my math could be a little off. We're paying more for these students. I had the good benefit to be a product of the Robert J. Dole Institute at the University of Kansas and study under Burdette Loomis. And actually interned for Senator Derek Schmidt when he was a freshman. And we learned about, among other things, the power that the barbers associations had in the 60s and 70s scared to death that people were going to stop cutting their hair. And I think it's critical that we fund this. For the record, I, I voted to, to keep the mill where it was at because we could use that extra six to seven million dollars for things like this. That was a factor in my analysis. I, I think supporting an entrepreneurial component is good. I can tell you in law school, they don't really teach you the business of law. You have to sink or swim on that one on your own. So I think teaching people can be good. I don't know that I had anybody go here, but I have many family and friends that have become hairstylists and earned a living. And I think in many cases, it's anecdotal, right? I can go look it up and get back to you, Dr. McLeod, but it's this job standing between a lot of people and poverty. It's this job that allow people to buy a house as a second income for a spouse. I don't know what those numbers are. My instinct as a social politico is that this is a program we need to support because these are people talking for us. These are people who represent the program and fit our brand, as I think trustee Ratan said. I would support the move to the main campus. We do need to think outside the box, but sometimes you have to think inside the box and just put this thing in the box. Like, they could practice more on our students here. And I, I commend you, Dr. McLeod, for figuring out ways to make this more efficient. It needs to be better managed. It needs to be done better in, in total. And I really want to be a wisecr with this one. I'm not sure if this isn't Colin Powell asking for too many troops when you have eight faculty members, but I'm in, right? And I appreciate the recommendation because I, I think that this is critical. I, I went to an institution, I wore this tie tonight to make this point. I, I grew up in a trailer, and we always got called Snob Hill at KU. And I never understood why we were called Snob Hill until I married a woman that was from a K-State family, and all the doctors and lawyers go to KU. So I don't want our brand to be, we're simply funneling people to KU or K-State. I think this is critical to meet a blue-collar crowd and people literally where they, they live, where they get their hair cut. Yet I get, I mean, with trustee Rail saying, one of my favorite TV shows was, one season was about a presidential campaign and their limited ability to have money. And everybody thinks that the campaign at that level's got millions of dollars or billions now, and that they can just get the money from the money tree. And there's no money tree. And, well, we can't be all things to all people. I, I think that, that's right. I mean, I'd like to have marine science here, but it doesn't really make sense in the middle of Kansas, so. What would, there, there's no proposed reduction in force here, right? We would figure out something to do with the existing faculty pursuant to the master agreement, right?
Well, we'd have to look at, there's one existing full-time faculty currently. The other two positions are vacant. We, we had those folks leave the institution in June as we were, which also kind of pushed us into a position to need to ma, have this conversation now while, while we do have one individual that we would have to sort out.
Yes, sir. I, I was just asking. I, I'll wrap up here. I could talk all night. But I, I think, I thank you for the, the different options and recommendations here. I thank you for the debate. I, I think it's critical. I think that it's our job to essentially, even assuming, you know, let me choose my words carefully here. I think it's our job to subsidize this and put this program forward. That's my preference. I would hope the board would support me on that. I understand, respect everything that was said. I understand what you're looking at from a dollar and cent standpoint. And I thank you for presenting at least two options where we could begin to mold or craft something that we do want to do. And I appreciate you. I appreciate you all being here. It's helpful to know and learn things. I get tired of going to meetings, whether it's a political party or civic organization or here, and we talk about stuff we're never going to do. So I appreciate you being here and putting a face to what we, we need to know and giving us information that we need that's, that's critical. So thank you. And I'll be quiet.
I need to conclude my report, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yes, madam trustee. On student success.
Because we have the rest of the.
We still have the presidential reports.
Oh, yeah, the sandwich.
The sandwich.
The Oreo.
Dessert's coming. I think what I took from your comments, Mr. Chair, is that we need to start a bartending program, and I'm going to be the first one to sign up.
Been bartending, sir.
Because I think that's a fantastic idea.
I didn't mean to suggest it, but without objection.
So there are some other agreements that came out of the student success committee that are part of the consent agenda. You'll find those on pages 38 and 39 of your board packet. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things about those based on Dr. McLeod's presentation of those to us. One is an agreement with Equity Bank. This is a new agreement to provide financial literacy workshops for our students. The second is a JCAE workforce development partnership. That one is a renewal. And then the third that I wanted to highlight is a new program with the VA Medical Center to develop a partnership with them for our students as well. None of those things have a financial impact. And, and so, as I mentioned, those are part of the consent agenda, and that will conclude my report.
I thank you, Madam trustee. Any other questions, comments for trustee Rail? I don't know who said it, if it was trustee Ratan or trustee Hamill, but thank you for presenting this to us and giving us time to think it through and digest it. I really do appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is the president's recommendations for actions. And I believe we'll begin with the treasurer's report by trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You can find the treasurer's report on pages 23 to 33 of your board packet. It includes a preliminary unaudited treasurer's report for the fiscal year ended July 31st, 2023. Some items of note include, on page one, or would be page 23, the general post-secondary technical education funds, which are the, in the primary operating funds of, which are the primary operating funds of the college. The state operating grant payment for the fall semester of 12.8 million was received on August 3rd and will be included in next month's report. The general fund unencumbered cash balance was 106 million as of July 31st, 2023. The expenditures in the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. It is a recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month ended July 31st, 2023, subject to audit. And, Mr. Chairman, I will make that motion.
Second. Motion's been made by trustee Smith Everett and seconded by trustee Musel. Any discussion on this recommendation? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 opposed, no. The recommendation passes unanimously. That concludes your report, trustee.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, it does.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item on our report is the monthly report to the board by our president, Dr. Andrew Ban.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm reminded of the movie The Incredibles. And when he's the youngest son, I can't think of his name, is Ron Ash at the end of the movie. Yes. As fast as I can? Can I go as fast as I can? Yes, run as fast as you can. So I'm feeling a lot of that right now.
Let it begin.
Here we go. You had a chance to spend some time with Apuna. She's going to do a fantastic job, not only as student senate president, but as you acknowledged in life. Incredible, incredible young person. Very quickly, in addition, in your, at each of your stations is the League for Innovation International Student Art Awards. And one of our students, Elena Ranki, took second place. And you will see that her piece of art actually displayed on campus when you walk out towards the CLB building, classroom lab building, and the fine arts and design building. You'll see it right there. And I just, congratulations to her for being recognized nationally in art competition. All righty. Here we go, folks. One of the things you've asked me for are just kind of the, out of the monthly update that you get, what are some of the things that are highlighted? So, you know, there's day-to-day operational work that often gets overlooked. And so I want to very quickly recognize our institutional research team. The academic year data collection is a major task the team goes through that provides the vehicle for Kbor and for others to use our data as we move forward. You heard earlier about the tremendous activity in the counseling department. Financial aid is another, just critical piece to who we are as a college. And I just wanted to quickly summarize out of that report that $2.2 million were awarded between foundation scholarships and institutional scholarships to approximately 1,500 students. When you look at outside scholarships, that's for organizations outside the college that grant scholarships to our students that have to be awarded, there's another 400,000 there. If you look at the Kansas Promise, if you look at the amounts that have been awarded, students still have to choose whether or not to take it, 367,000. That's more than 185 students right now. And the Casey Scholars Program offers another 155,000. When you total that up, that's 3.1, roughly $3.1 million in scholarship support that goes to our students. And that is, and we heard it today, for those of you who are able to be at the luncheon, scholarship luncheon, it changes the lives of our students. And so I want to say thank you to our donors and to this board and to our partners outside of the college for their support. New student orientations up 26% over where it was in 2019. There's lots of work that happens, and at the very front end of this work is really around how do we improve processes here on the campus? And there's a group that's being formed that's looking at academic, excuse me, not academic, administrative program review. Parallel to academic program review is what happens in the administrative offices around the college, and how do we use that to, to be better at what we do? So I, I want to draw the attention to that because it's at the front end of the work. But to recognize to our college community, it is critically important that we continue to look at ways to do things better, to better serve students, to better serve each other, and better serve our community. And we heard a little bit more of that tonight. Quick highlights out of our students. Our emergency management program, EMS program, simulations week was at the very end of August. And, and that's where they take all their skills and put it to work, right? And find out that they really have the skills they're going to need to be successful through very intensive simulation exercises. Our dental hygiene program, again, 100% pass rate, coming out of both the clinical board exam and the national exam. Our nursing program, 51 out of the 53 students coming out of the RS, the RN program, Associate Degree in Nursing program, 100% pass rate out of 51 who have taken it so far, there's two yet to go. And to draw attention to a couple of our faculty and staff members here, Jackie Edson, who leads our National Higher Education Benchmarking Institute, was selected by the U.S. Department of Education and specifically to the Secretary Cardona to serve in a regional advisory board. That's a tremendous honor for her. Absolutely. And then I just draw your attention to Lisa Cole, one of our accounting faculty members, who worked, put a poster outside of her, out of her office so students could come in and, and a way to engage students to say you matter and to engage them in doing that. And it was a unique way that you got a faculty member coloring on a poster, doesn't necessarily always fit within the world of accounting, but she did it as a way to draw on our students, and I want to draw attention to that. So anyways, some quick highlights out of that report. Enrollment, enrollment's strong. On the continuing ed side, you can see the upward trend here, again, this fall. And again, it's across the board. It's from the continuing ed work. It's the adult ed work. It's the customized training work that happens in businesses across this community. When we go and look at credit enrollment, right? We're up between 3% and 4%, whether you look at headcount or whether you look at, at credit hours. And so I want to say thank you to our team that's been working very diligently to attract students. The big swing that we're in right now is with concurrently enrolled high school students, right? This is, this is the window where they register for classes. And so, you know, we'd expect a better part of another 1,000 students yet to be registered in that. in that group of students. So enrollment, strong. I think it's a very positive thing. And then I just wanted to say to our team, we've had a really strong start to the school year. We see it evidenced from Cav craze to a variety of things around campus. You feel the energy. I, I remember Chair Cross coming out of the audit committee meeting. You said to me, it took me forever to find a parking spot here on campus. I haven't remembered this in a while. Awesome. Again, we don't have a parking problem, we have a walking problem. I'm not the first president to say that. Anyways, picnic is, was referenced earlier, fantastic. And then three upcoming events, legislative delegation session scheduled for October 5th, RSVPs, the requests of invitations have gone out, science building, CLB building, project completion celebration, October 13th. And it was already mentioned, some enchanted evening on November 11th. And then the second to last thing I'm going to say in my report, we applied for a, a free retreat through ACCT to, they would send in consultants from ACCT who could come alongside us as a board and think about. So we've got time to think about what that looks like, but we thought, hey, if we can reduce the cost, and it's something that I think is of interest anyways, let's do it. So anyways, that's yet to come. I want to close my comments tonight by saying thank you. I want to say thank you to the team that has worked so hard to put our budget together. I know the, the seriousness with which you all take our budget. I know not everybody, you know, agrees about everything about the budget, but you passed it. And it allows us to serve students. It allows us to serve this community in a meaningful way. And I want to say thank you for supporting the budget tonight. And finally, for supporting the negotiated rate increases. I know for our employees, nobody likes to hear rate increase. Frankly, we don't like the words rate increase, but we've dramatically cut what the impact could have been. And so while I know nobody's thinking, God, I'd like to pay 7.5% more than what I'm paying right now. The good news is it's a whole lot better than 15%. And so I want to say thank you to our team that's worked so hard at that and certainly Holmes Murphy on their behalf as well. So with that, I'm happy to conclude my report and answer any questions that you might have that you want to ask me another day. I'm kidding.
Any questions for Dr. Bound?
Two very quick ones. Can you go back to that slide?
Uh, yep.
The legislative delegation sessions. Which in the past we were invited to when you said the invitations went out. Is that to us or to legislators?
Going out to the legislators so far.
Oh, okay. So the, the sessions would be October 5th?
The session would be, yes.
Okay. So they have a quick turnaround to get an RSVP and then we'll get invitations, right? Like we did last year, we sign up for.
Yeah. Now, right now, we have one session to offer.
Oh, that's right.
So we're going to have to look out and y'all are going to have to fight it out when I'm not looking.
Okay. We can do that. We can arm wrestle, start working on it. And then the free board meeting is awesome. Will that come to board governance?
I think that's up to you and the chair about how that happens, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay, that was it.
All right.
No more questions.
Any other questions for Dr. Bound? Remember, remind me I said that, would you? Thank you, Dr. Bound.
You're welcome.
Thank you all. The next item on our agenda is new business. Does anybody have any new business? Any old business for the good of the order? No. The next item is consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody would like to discuss?
I have one. Yeah. The retirement tribute, page 40. I noticed an issue.
Judy Riley and Brian Baumgartner?
Yes, it says Mr. Baumgartner, not Dr. Baumgartner. Just wanted to make that apparent, so you can get that fixed for the record.
That's a historical fact you just caught there. The genesis of Molly Baumgartner's candidacy.
There you go.
Anything else? So can we, can we correct that on page 40? I don't know if that needs a motion, does it?
I move for the consent agenda with the correction of Mr. to Dr.
I'll second.
About that.
Second. Go ahead.
Motion's been made by trustee Musial and seconded by trustee Ingram with the amendment that we change. We add Dr. to Brian Baumgartner's name. Any further discussion? Any other discussion? I'll just say thank you to Judy Riley and, and Dr. Baumgartner for all of their work here at the college. We, we sure do appreciate you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is for an executive session, which I have requested. I think we'd asked for an hour, but trustee Ingram and I have discussed limiting it to 30 minutes. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I need the details. I mean.
Yeah. What for?
To evaluate personnel matters of non-elected personnel.
I will make the motion, but I need to know who's going to be in attendance.
Yes, sorry. I'm, I too am tired. We will invite Dr. Bound and Kelsey Nizar to join the executive session. No action will be taken. The executive session will last for 30 minutes, beginning at 8:00.
40?
40, ending at 9:10, at which time open session will resume at the same location. We would invite Dr. Bound and Kelsey Nizar to join us in this executive session.
So moved.
Trustee Musial. Trustee Smith Everett. Seconds. All those in favor, any discussion on this? I guess we can't. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. We'll see you in 30 minutes, 34 minutes. We're back after the executive session in which no action was taken and we're now ready to adjourn.